Good evening, Wakefield, and welcome to the Town Council meeting of November 4th, 2024. I'm Town Council Vice Chair Ed Dombrowski, sitting in this evening for our Chair Mike McLean, who will be joining us, albeit remotely. Before we begin, I would ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I understand tonight we have in-studio Councillors Butt, excuse me, Councillor Butler, Vincent, Councillor Chines, Councillor Carney. Online, we have Councillor McLean, and I believe Councillor Butt may be joining us at some point this evening. Before we begin, I'd just like to thank everyone who's tuned into us live tonight. I can promise you that you will not hear any talk of swing states, or margins of error, or polling of any sort. So hopefully, this will be a bit of a respite from what we've all been hearing in the media. With that said, we are at 7:03, and so we can move to open up the public hearing, which is dealing with tax classifications. This will require a roll-call vote, as will all the votes this evening, because we have Councillor McLean joining us via Zoom. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
All of those in favor, and we'll go through. Councillor Butler, Councillor Vincent, Councillor Chines, Councillor Carney, Councillor McLean?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and myself, I as well. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. This is for tax classification, something that we do every year at this time. And with that, I'll welcome Victor Santinello, who is our assessor, our town assessor, who will go through a presentation relative to our tax classification for both residential and commercial. Good evening.
Thank you, Councillor Dombrowski. Oh, here we are, another year, another tax classification. Oh, this ought to be fun. What we're here to do tonight is four items. Four items of a selection of a minimum residential factor, which are all outlined in the guide. That's the six-digit number that the council would choose that will yield anticipated tax rates, and be mindful, those rates can change a penny throughout the tax rate recap process of the state. Next, we'll talk about an open-space discount. We'll talk about a residential exemption, and a small-commercial exemption. Minimum residential factor. If a factor of one would yield one single tax rate, to do that, you divide the total tax levy by the total valuation of the town of Wakefield, which is just over $7.6 billion, and that arrives at a single tax rate of $12.44 per thousand of value. Chapter 200 law that we have to follow allows Wakefield to select a factor of less than one, thereby shifting more of the tax burden onto the commercial sector. Historically, Wakefield has chosen the maximum allowable shift factor to afford residential taxpayers the lowest possible share of the tax burden in Wakefield allowed under state law. This chart shows what the tax rate would be at a couple of different shift levels. And if I draw you down to the bold print at 1.75, which historically has been the shift, we would see an estimated residential tax rate of $11.36 per thousand, and a CIP, which means Commercial, Industrial, and Personal Tax Rate, of 2177. The Wakefield Senior Discount. I can't tell you how proud we are of this program, and for the support of not only Town Council, our administration, Steve, everyone at Town Hall, and, most importantly, our legislative delegation getting this passed. This year, we had 267 applications received. 256 were approved. The ones that aren't approved are due to the way their real estate trusts may be structured. They may also own second properties, which would make them ineligible. They would have excessive assets. The median amount granted was 2,400. If you'll recall, earlier this year, the state increased the circuit breaker amount to a maximum of 2,590, which is up considerably. I believe last year, it was right around 1,200. Yeah, it was 1,200. This is paid for by a shift within the residential tax rate. And to do this, I have to shift tax dollars around to accomplish it. And this year, with the increase in the state allowance and our match, we'll be shifting slightly over $500,000 within the tax rate. This adds eight cents to the residential tax rate, and it costs the average single-family taxpayer, which all of us are, about $60, to help seniors age in place and remain vibrant in our community. We'd also like to thank the folks, the Senior Center. During tax time, we're there to heavily promote it. We couldn't do that without the dedicated assistance of Senior Center Director Karen Burke and her staff down there, really helping us to get the word out. The average single-family value in Wakefield is 782,900. And as you can see at those various shift intervals I mentioned earlier, the last column is what the estimated tax bill would be. And if we went to 1.75, the anticipated tax bill will be $8,894 for the average single-family value at a value of 782.9. The average commercial value in Wakefield is slightly over $1,006,000. But I also like to look at the median commercial value, which, to me, is an important indicator of your smaller business, your mom-and-pops, your standalone shops, things of that nature, because I think it's important to look at that tax burden as well as a unit of measure. And you can see, if we go to 1.75, the estimated commercial rate would be $21.77. The average commercial tax bill would be slightly over $35,600, and the estimated median tax bill would be slightly over $14,000. The maximum allowable shift with, at 1.75, the minimum residential factor would be .906978. And again, our estimated tax rates would be $11.36 for residential, $21.77 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. The average tax bill comparison from 2024 to 2025, the average single-family value went up 3.4%. The tax rate changes by 11 cents. The average residential bill goes up $384, or 4.5%, but be mindful, within that number, $282 of that increase is related to our structured debt. The average commercial value went up slightly, 1.5%. The commercial tax rate goes up seven cents, and the average commercial bill goes up $642, or 1.26%. And debt exclusion notes. Fiscal '25 is the 11th year of the full debt exclusion for the, I should take "new" out of there, it's the Galvin School, right? Okay. Debt exclusion adds slightly over $3 million to our 2025 total tax levy. It adds 36 cents to the residential tax rate, or $282 to the average single-family tax bill, and 69 cents to the CIP rate, or $1,129 to the average commercial tax bill. Also included within this debt service is $556,000 for net costs associated with Wakefield Memorial High. For the values that we completed for fiscal year '25, we used 2,023 sales of single-family homes. The prior assessments are based on 2022 sales. In 2022, we had 214 sales, and that number dropped in 2023 for obvious reasons relative to, you know, increase in interest rates, things of that nature, down to 170 sales. Days on market changed slightly from 22 to 26 days, and the average sale price went from 744 to 8011, an increase of 7.62%. This information is straight from the MLS Real Estate Listing Service. Moving on to an open-space discount. Open space is defined as land, God bless, which is not otherwise classified and which is not taxable under provisions of Chapter 61A or 61B. We have no such classification for open-space land in Wakefield that fits the state definition. So obviously, you would vote to reject an open-space discount. Residential exemption. Residential exemption of up to 35% of the average residential value can be applied to owner-occupied homes. But that's after you factor that in, what it does is significantly increase the residential tax rate. It has no bearing on commercial taxes. Only a handful of communities, like Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, and Brookline, I think there's 11 total that use it. But basically, the residential tax would rise substantially before any discount. The way it would work in Wakefield is the top third of the highest-value single-family homes would be paying for the exemption for everybody else in the community. It's designed as an incentive in inner-city homes, like where I used to live, Chelsea, as a discount for owners who own their homes, live in them, and where a lot of the residential property is investor-owned, your two families, three families, six families, things of that nature. So within those classes, it's those properties that fund the exemption. But I can safely say 90% of our single-family homes, at a minimum, are all owner-occupied, so. And a small-commercial exemption, an exemption of up to 10% of the property valuation for commercial properties owned. Eligible businesses cannot have more than 10 employees, as certified by the Department of Employment Training. Building value cannot exceed $1 million. One business in a building could not qualify unless every other business qualifies. The exemption goes to the building owner, and we are unaware of any standalone businesses that would qualify that also meet the reporting requirements for Division of Employment and Just little interesting notes about surrounding communities, their tax rates, and their average single-family values, and what their tax bills are. This is for fiscal year '24, because '25 data, well, hasn't been decided yet. Next slide is just a peek at average single-family tax bills from 2006 to present, measuring various changes between years. And this next page gives us the average commercial tax bill from 2004 to present. And this last slide gives us what the other communities surrounding us do relative to tax shift. It lists what their capacity is and what they actually do for a tax shift in their communities, and it also measures the change to the commercial tax base as a result of those changes. Be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santinello, for going through that. Before we get to the public hearing portion, do any councillors have any questions or comments for our assessor? Councillor Chines?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And thank you, Mr. Santinello. You know, you always do a great job pulling together the presentation, and even after going through this a few years, I feel like every year, I pick up another nugget and learn more, so appreciate what goes into that. I just have a comment that I want to make, and then a question. The comment I want to make is on the senior property tax discount. And, you know, I don't know if people in the community realize how visionary you were in pulling that together. And in fact, I see, you know, more and more home rule petitions from other communities that are trying to replicate that. I think that's been a tremendous success. I think the fact that the circuit breaker has doubled, that has also increased the amount of the senior property tax discount that we offer in Wakefield is phenomenal, and I'm glad to see that we have such uptake, and hope we continue to see uptake there as well. And again, you and Karen Burke and the Senior Center do a great job of that. I did want to ask you a little bit about commercial values. So, you know, I'm sort of encouraged, and I say sort of, because obviously, we still have the kind of, the shift between commercial and residential, where residential values are going up more than commercial proportionally, and that's why we continue to see these increases above the 2.5% levy limit. I was a little encouraged to see that commercial values seem to hold their own this year, but I'm wondering if you have a sense, just from what you've observed in the community, what you're hearing from, you know, assessors in other communities about, you know, where we think kind of commercial valuations are going over time. Are we, you know, sort of at a place where we're fortunate, because we still have, you know, properties that are under lease that, you know, may come out from under lease at some point? Or, you know, is there something that's, you know, we can kind of rely on to help kind of sustain commercial valuations over time?
My biggest fear is, you know, an overall slowdown in leasing of commercial office space. And although it hasn't started, in the back of my mind, I have a fear of those going residential. Through the years, we have this talk, and I always get the question, what can we do, you know, to help even it off? And I say, well, attract and support commercial development in the community to try to build up that legisize. But I think those days are behind us, and we have to manage what we have left. The increase in interest rates hits what's called the capitalization rate. When I do an income approach to value, the higher the rate yields a lower value, and we're kind of stuck with that. If interest rates start trending down, it would make it easier for owners of these buildings to consider keeping them residential, keeping them commercial, and maybe attracting and retaining some good leases to keep the value up. But I'm dealing with properties, not just here, and in my other communities, that have 50%, 60% vacancy. And that's where all our fights happen, when it comes down to value. But just trying to make sure that the physical structures that comprise our commercial base try to remain commercial.
Great, thank you. Councillor Carney?
I'm concerned about the fact that, and I think you alluded to it, the fact that commercial property is disappearing in this town. I mean, we have a lot converting to housing, side of the Head of Lake, Foundry Street, what have you. And I'm not sure that we have any way to give an incentive for to stay commercial. I mean, some of the old planners from 30, 40 years ago would be rolling over now, because the fact that nobody would ever think that people would take good commercial property and convert it to housing. What's happening on Foundry Street is just unheard of. Maybe you understand more about this, but I do, but I'm just saying, I'm kind of shocked. And I think more of that's going to happen. So how does that affect our decision tonight, is my question? The fact that if we continue to keep the commercial rate up there to satisfy, you know, our citizens, say, hey, you know, we're right there behind you, in the long run, how does that affect what we're really doing here? Do you understand that as a question?
One of the things that the town has at its disposal, and it's something that Steve, myself, and now Eric Kukinda have in our toolbox to attract companies here, like we did with one company a few years ago up around Autobahn Road, we have the ability to help them get state incentives to relocate here. We also forego assessing personal property taxes on certain R&amp;D businesses to try to make this an attractive location. But in my honest opinion, we're kind of stuck in Wakefield. You have large property owners that own some nice buildings along Autobahn Road, and I've given up speaking with them. Hey, can we get a technology center here? Let's knock these down. Let's make this a hub. Let's make this an incubator site. Problem is, those property owners already own sites like that in Danvers and in Woburn, and they'd be competing with themselves if they do it here. That's the conclusion I arrived at, which is why we can't get any action. To Councillor Carney, to answer your question, yes, it is a high tax burden here. You'll see that surrounding communities, for the most part, go to their maximum allowable shift, and taxes are simply a cost of doing business. To do something different would mean increasing the residential share of the tax burden. And I believe the 20 years that I've been here, this board has always taken great pride in offering residential taxpayers the lowest possible share of the tax burden allowed under state law.
You know, when there's, if I may, Mr. Chairman, when you have 40% vacancies in a commercial property, that reduces their tax burden, I believe.
Not to the extent they would like, but yes.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, throwing things against the tide here, you know. Sooner or later, you know, we're going to have to deal with it. And I think we represent the people. So just to say to the people, hey, we're going to give you a tax break, and we're going to continue this, I'm not sure is the right thing to do, in my own opinion.
And one of the things I've done behind the scenes is work with the property management company up in Edgewater. They own several of the office buildings up there, and they've been trying to rehab and move tenants around to get the maximum efficiency and utility out of their buildings. So when I set values, or sit down to set values, I talk with them. What's the plan for this year? What are we doing? And I may not have an individual, say, 5% or 10% vacancy rate on all the buildings. I may have a token vacancy rate on some, but the one they're rehabbing for the year will have a larger vacancy rate, just so they recognize we are doing what we can to help them thrive and survive in this climate. So I think meeting and talking with these building owners and with their representatives goes a long way before they really consider changing the use of the building.
I see that Chairman McLean has his hand up.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Victor, what are our actual commercial vacancy rates? Can you give us an idea? I hear numbers being thrown around like 50, 40, 60, but how's Wakefield doing?
Well, vacancy, as you'll recall from your service to the Board of Assessors, is always something that's to be discussed. Typically, in a standard approach, we'll have, say, 10% vacancy. Why? Because that's typically what the appellate tax board will put into an equation. Now, some people will come at you, oh, we had a 40% vacancy. Well, all right, I'm not going to recognize that in one year. Let's talk about equalizing it over several years, so we don't short ourselves one year and overcharge the next year. I think that Wakefield, overall, as far as vacancy rate goes, we do have a couple of outliers that are in the 30%, 40%, but everything is trending between, you know, around 15%. So to the point where, I'll know more with the upcoming abatement season, but 15% isn't far off from what we put into the equation to start with. The real thing that drives it is the capitalization rate, as I mentioned earlier, largely due to higher interest rates.
Right, and cap rate goes up and goes down based on interest rate environment, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I think the only thing, Victor, I don't want to keep you here too long, the only thing I would say in relation to Councillor Carney's comments and others is there are a couple of aspects to this. If you look at your own graph there, slightly over 20-year history, although they have a higher rate burden, the commercial properties have gone up from approximately 1.3 million to 1.6, a fractional increase over a couple of decades, whereas residential properties have close to doubled. You know, so it seems to me that we've always done the maximum shift. I think considering doing less than the maximum shift would be a big error, especially in light of the fact that the high school building is just starting to hit taxpayers over and above what they're already looking at. And that's just a comment from me, Victor. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Councillor Butler?
I'm the one who always goes after the sacred cows. So with regards to the senior credit, can you talk me through what sort of the restrictions are on that? Do they have to qualify for that circuit breaker? Is there like an income threshold and that sort of thing?
Seniors have to qualify for the Senior Circuit Breaker Income Tax Credit from the state. That's what I stuck to, but then, after I stopped rolling with this, there are certain seniors that don't file income taxes for a variety of reasons. They're, you know, they don't earn enough, or what have you. So what my staff does is, we go through their whole income and expense package and determine whether or not they otherwise would have qualified. It's the fair thing to do. So if they qualify for the Senior Circuit Breaker Income Tax Credit, our local restrictions are owning, occupying the community for 10 years, co-applicant spouse can, has to be, you have to be 65 to get the credit, your spouse has to be at least age 60 above, and no significant assets.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine. I think I was concerned that we were giving a credit to seniors just for being seniors and not facing, you know, given that that demographic generally has more money than most.
You should be at my counter. I'm 65. What do I get?
Yeah, well, I hear you around that. I guess the other question, and I think this is where Councillor Carney was also going, is we have done this is we have done this maximum shift, and I'm not sure that I'm in favor of going the full max. Again, if you look at our tax burden versus others, you know, our tax rate is the highest with exception of Reading, but where we're really, you know, we can't say that we're really looking out for commercial and industrial property owners if we have the second highest rate amount around us. I just feel like we are, we have often shifted so much more of the burden in terms of the economic vitality. The commercial space is not responsible for twenty percent of Wakefield's economics. It's the residential space that's probably responsible for ninety, and we're offloading, we're making commercial pay probably a little too much. And granted, I understand it's super popular to not raise people's taxes or to give them as much of a break as possible, but I think we may be doing ourselves a long-term disservice, and we have historically, when I was on the Finance Committee, I also talked about this, pushing off the burden from the homeowner to the commercial property owner, largely because, you know, the commercial property owner doesn't get quite as many votes as the residential property owner does. So in terms of fairness, I don't think it's great for us economically to have shifted so much of our burden to commercial, especially because it's making it harder and harder for us to develop commercial properties here. Now, we have a bunch of structural issues as well. And then my last thing is, I don't think we should be proud of the fact that we have this small business exemption that nobody can apparently get. So is that a state thing or is that us?
State.
So is it, what's the issue? Is it the million dollars that almost all our commercial properties are valued over? Where is the issue?
The issue's of both. First is the valuation, meaning that not exceeding that million-dollar threshold. Next is ten employees as certified by the Division of Employment Training. Now, there may be a small shop where their people are paid as contractors and therefore don't, aren't required to report that way, but that's a business decision that they made, so they would not appear on any documentation I receive from the state. But back to what you were talking about, the shift, one thing, and Counselor McLean alluded to it, if only commercial values rose proportionally to residential values, the shift wouldn't exist. Biggest reason the shift exists and has existed since the Classification Amendment is to make up for that inequity. Commercial property owners get to write off trash fees, your utilities, landscaping, snow removal. Residential taxpayers don't.
Yeah. The other thing is, is it looks like we're losing four. You've got slated us dropping to three hundred and seven, which would be a new all-time low for us in the last twenty years.
Those also, those where I have counts of properties, sometimes those are holding places, those numbers can be fluid. For example, sixty-two Foundry Street, we all know it's going to be condo units, but until that master deed is filed, that's in my apartment building category. So if you look at apartment buildings, there's going to be changes there. There'll be changes in mixed use because condo complex may have some type of commercial office downstairs. So that's, those numbers can sway a few either way, depending on the status of various projects in the community.
Okay. Seems fair, and again, we don't have that many, you know, our change in overall number of single-family parcels has not been enormous. We haven't been developing a ton of single-family, so I don't, you know, I think we're fine there, and it's just we have property values that have risen dramatically.
And that also does impact the different percentage between residential and commercial because it's based on value. And residential values have exploded, commercial share hasn't, therefore, the commercial share as relative to the tax base shrinks.
I think to Counselor Butler's point, we're seeing that play out in Boston, for instance. I mean, that's a really good example of that. Ultimately, personal perspective is if they have a spending issue, and that's ultimately what's created the situation, but lo and behold, commercial values have really tanked, and that's caused, necessarily caused, more responsibility, if you will, on the residential rate.
I'm waiting to see what Boston does as a result of their tax classification.
Right.
It's going to be an interesting read.
But at the same time, you know, I'm also mindful of the fact that when commercial property is suffering, the last thing you want to do is overburden them with additional costs, obviously from an economic development standpoint. Counselor Vincent, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Nebraska. Thanks for appearing tonight. Can you go to the slide that shows the last twenty years, the tax rate? Thank you.
Commercial?
No, residential. From two thousand and six. So if I look, I know the rate this year is four point four percent, the estimated rate for two thousand and twenty-five is four point four percent at the bottom of your chart.
Yep.
So if I look back over the last ten to twelve years, it looks like the only time that the increase was less than the four point four percent this year was last year at three point five seven, and then in two thousand and seventeen at three point four seven. So although the headline's going to be that tax bills are going to go up by four point four percent, when you put it in perspective of what it's been like for the last decade, this increase is less than what we've seen in most of the other years. Would that be correct? I'm trying to read this through my bifocals, and the screen's kind of far away.
Twenty-two is lower.
You're there. It's within the ballpark of what the average.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two was lower, twenty-twenty-four was lower, and twenty-seventeen. So three years over the last ten years. Okay. Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick observations on the shift issue, and I, I'm glad we're, it's a technical discussion, but I'm glad we're having it because I think it's an important discussion, both for the council and for the community, as we think about kind of the puts and takes here, because, you know, the reality is, we sort of set our tax rate within a very specific formula that's given to us by the state, and, you know, changes in commercial relative to residential valuations make a big difference. I am supportive of the maximum shift, and I think there are a couple of reasons for that, you know, beyond kind of the obvious desire to kind of avoid overburdening residents with a larger increase. I think one, and I appreciate Chairman McLean making this point, is we think about equity and tax burden. I think it's both the overall rate, but it's also the change from year to year. And, you know, while the share of taxes kind of taken by the commercial book in Wakefield has gone up over the years, the average increases year over year have actually been pretty low. In fact, there have been some years where the tax rate, the tax bill has gone down for commercial properties, and so I think we have to look at all of these things together, and, you know, where we're talking about, you know, mid-single digits in some cases for residential, and, you know, flat or decreasing for commercial, you know, to me, that's one reason why the shift makes sense. The other point that I'd want to make is just as I look at the town surrounding us, obviously, there's some variability in what they do on the shifts. Reading is really the one that's kind of the outlier to me, where they have basically a minimal shift to commercial, and, you know, probably the one that has sort of far and away the lowest commercial tax rate. I don't know, though, as I look at the development in Reading, I don't know that that's really helped them in terms of retaining or attracting businesses. I mean, I see the same residential development in Reading that I see in Wakefield, and I see the same commercial properties kind of coming offline. And Victor, I would ask you to speak out of turn for one of your other.
I'm squirming over here, yes, thank you.
But, you know, just as an observation, as, you know, someone who lives near Reading, drives through Reading just, you know, almost as much as I do in Wakefield, you know, if the assumption was that kind of the property tax rate for commercial properties was going to drive commercial development, I would think that you would see a much larger commercial base in Reading that you see today, or certainly, you know, less residential development than you're seeing. And again, just observationally, that doesn't seem to be the case there.
Correct. It's all apartment buildings, condos with mixed use.
I would say that there's something that really stands out to me in this, and I think it's important for people watching to also understand, there's been a lot of talk about shifting the burden and the lowest allowable burden by law. There's talk about not wanting to overburden our residents, and those are all nice, nice things to say, but what's baked into this and hasn't been presented, or for that matter, discussed, is the fact that we're still making the assumption of going the full two and a half percent in all of this. And I think that that gets lost in this discussion, and so if we're truly committed to tax relief for our residents, then we should not be taxing to the max of the two and a half percent allowable by law. So as much as we're saying, well, we're using the lowest factor that the state provides, we're certainly not using the lowest increase that we could, we're in fact using the highest increase allowable by law. And that kind of gets buried in this when we're looking at the numbers. I understand it's all formulaic, but, you know, perhaps if you could just, you know, speak to that piece a little bit, because that has always been the biggest concern for me. I know that there's been this quote-unquote "policy" that was established by this council that I was not supportive, nor am I now. And so if we're truly committed to helping the taxpayers and looking out for the residential taxpayer amounts, that three eighty-four that you referenced as the average increase, that is in large part because of the taxing to the max of two and a half percent, and the four, I think elsewhere you had four and a half percent, but four point four percent, that's a reflection of that, and we haven't onboarded, if you will, the full effect of the high school yet, as you alluded to. So these numbers are just going to get larger, and I think that a four point four, four point five percent increase on a tax bill with that known additional cost coming to people is extraordinary. And I'm really troubled by the fact that we've done this tax analysis, if you will, without recognizing, I think, the elephant in the room, which is, we've taxed to the max because all the assumptions in here are based upon the highest allowable by law, and I think that that's not right.
Did you, are you looking for a response?
No, it was more, it was more, it was more a statement, but to be clear, the, we, this, these numbers build into the equation, the assumption of going the full two and a half percent.
In addition to previously authorized debt by the taxpayers of the community, which of three eighty-four to eighty-two is existing debt, and knowing full well that we have the cost of a new high school, what we did at last town meeting was double our other existing statutory exemptions. So if you are a veteran with a ten percent service-connected disability, you'll now receive eight hundred dollars instead of four hundred dollars. It was one of the things we had in our pocket to help ameliorate some of the burden for the new high school. But again, the other part of it largely is existing debt, and when you take that out of the equation, the tax increases a little over a hundred dollars. Now, that does involve going up two and a half percent, but that's a result of what the community, largely through this board and others down to the departments, decides it needs to function.
I think anyone watching should not be under the illusion that this council is doing all that it can to ensure that you have the lowest tax bill, because that's not what's happening here. In fact, we could have a lower tax bill for residents if we didn't go the full two and a half percent. That would involve us having to look at how we're spending within each of our departments and making sure that we're accountable for those dollars. So I just think it's important that while it's a feel-good story to say that we've shifted the maximum burden onto the commercial and lifted it from commercial, from the residential, it doesn't remove the reality that this is still taxing to the max of the full two and a half percent. I think it's important for people to understand that. So in concept, I agree that we should do the shifting as it's presented, but in practicality, when you incorporate the two and a half percent, which is the maximum allowable amount, I don't support that, so that's why I won't be voting in favor of this.
Mike.
I'm sorry, Counselor McLean. Or Chairman McLean.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Two further comments, entirely different areas. One is that I believe relative to commercial and residential, as has been discussed, Counselor Chines brings up a good point relative to Reading, this is more societal. So, you know, people are working from home, we all know what's going on out there, and as Victor may recall, when I was on the Board of Assessors, I think we had about a sixty-nine to thirty-one split, and about a thirty-one percent commercial base. That has eroded significantly. I don't know that anything can be done about it. If there's any good news in that, I guess I would say that I think residential is a more stable tax base. Having been involved in some scary litigation years gone by relative to valuations of commercial properties, you know, if we're over eighty percent in residential, as the town administrator will tell us, we usually collect it, and we don't have as many big fights relative to valuations there, although I think Victor's done a very good job. Congratulations, Victor, not having us be involved in a ton of fights in recent years. Looking to the other side, I too, along with the Vice Chair, was not in favor of our current reserves policy, although I think we have to look at it from a couple of angles. One is that the town administrators indicated to us that the bonding people want us to maintain even more in terms of reserves than what we have been. And in addition to that, I think, in all honesty, we all know that a good sixty, seventy, whatever percentage it is, Tommy Butler used to tell me it was two-thirds, of all of our costs are labor-related across the town. And unless and until, you know, we're all willing to somehow, in this environment, not do the contracts that I feel we must do with the unions to maintain our workers, I think there's really no point in saying that we have to go to zero-based budgeting or go down to zero, because, you know, we're not voting that way. None of us are voting that way, so let's be honest about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, I just wanted to make the point, I mean, we've kind of alluded to the fact that, you know, we as a council did approve a tax levy policy a couple of years ago, and the reason for it, and I think it was sort of summarized nicely by our colleague at the time, Counselor Danahue, who said it's math. You know, we have a set of spending that was approved by town meeting in the spring. You know, we have policies related to reserves, which I think we've had some robust conversations about, which are good conversations to have, as to whether those are too high, too low. You know, we've heard from the rating agencies that perhaps it's too low. I don't know that I agree with that. I think we're actually at a good place. But the result is that when you kind of add those factors together, they give you a number. Last year, we were fortunate where that number was less than two and a half percent. This year, it's not. Unfortunately, I think we would have loved to have seen it at that level, but again, you know, it's math at the end of the day. I think that there's some conservatism built into our revenue assumptions, as we talked about at the tri-board meeting, and so I hope that we end up in a place next year where the formula leads to a number that is not two and a half, but, you know, I think we have to be responsive to just the realities that we face in terms of the spending that the voters approved at town meeting and the reserves that we need to maintain. Those things produce a number, and I think you've, you know, produced a proposal today that is reflective of that number.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. To be clear on the town meeting piece, the voters are presented with budgets that they approve at town meeting. Certainly, there's scrutiny during that meeting, but I think the voters put a lot of faith in the budgeting process. One of the things that I've noticed in, to Chairman McLean's point, is that we, in recent years especially, have continued on this path of adding headcount and FTE, full-time employment, employees and with benefits, and that is a longer-term commitment we're making when we're doing that. I know that Chairman McLean has shared my reservations relative to a number of those, and so I would really encourage our departments to think about. And so I would really encourage our departments to think about how to approach things differently relative to that. A few FTEs come to mind right now, and there are significant consequences financially for us with that. So they end up becoming fixed costs, if you will. So I think it really behooves every department to reevaluate needs and deploying of resources in a way that's going to be most cost-effective, because we're on a path to unsustainability. And again, the high school project, a very worthy project, has not even really hit this, the tax rolls in a meaningful way. And that's going to be a significant concern, I think, for a lot of folks. All right. If I don't see, have any more comments from the council, because this is a public hearing, I would like to open it up to see anyone in studio or Madam Clerk, is there anyone online from the public that has comments?
Yes. Scott McCauley does have a comment. I'm bringing him over now.
If you could just state your name and address.
Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I heard a few things tonight, and I just had some questions. I came in late, so I'm not sure of the gentleman's name that's sitting at the table.
I am Victor, your tax assessor.
Victor, thank you. So Victor, I heard, so as far as commercial tax rating, so with the new MBTA overlay district, part of the, one of the districts is going to be a mixed-use district that encompasses Albion Street and Greenwood primarily are my questions. Part of that is that by right, those properties can be converted to all residential and not tax rate. And I'm wondering if anybody has brought that to your attention? And with the total of, between the two areas, between Albion Street and Greenwood, it encompasses about 54 properties, most of which are commercial right now? And I'm just wondering what that does to our commercial tax base and our tax rates, if all that goes away? And then I had Mr. Mayo say that in the AAA bond ratings, they would ask, they were concerned that the taxpayers might be in tax fatigue. And I'm wondering how that might affect our AAA bond rating going forward with tax increases like this? We outspend our neighbors in other towns, and our tax rates are probably around the highest in other towns. And I think we have a spending problem in Wakefield. And tax increases don't seem to be a problem, because they seem to keep coming. And I think a lot of people are fatigued. The new tax for the high school, I think the full amount's not coming to effect until 2029? Yeah, 2029, I believe, is the full amount. So if we're looking at average tax going up 300-plus a year for the next three years, is it $900 or $1,000? And another 1,400 or so, maybe with the new high school? That's a big increase for people that's going to come down the road. And I'm just wondering if anybody came to you about the MBTA properties with this, knowing that some of these properties might convert to residential? If you're input on that, and I welcome your comments.
Well, we see change happening regardless of it being designated a potential MBTA zone. I mean, we see buildings coming in, you know, the head of the lake, you have going from a tired old commercial to these units and a small portion of commercial. Also, lower end of Albion Street, a lot of those are already mixed-use properties. And I don't know necessarily all that would eventually go residential because of the, you get some investment on that street, just like we've seen along Foundry Street, that is gentrifying by adding properties in a tired, old location. Yes, they're residential. Our total tax collection revenue increases, but because they're residential, it inhibits our shift capacity. But I wouldn't say that, you know, MBTA community is going to bring one type or another type of property to the community. I could easily see a lot of the Albion Street area maybe being rebuilt with a store downstairs and units above, like we're used to. Or even several parcels assembled for one larger structure, again, with some type of commercial component that we see downstairs, similar to 175 North Ave. So it's kind of hard to put in a bin and say, we're going to lose this and gain this. It just hasn't fleshed out that way yet.
This number that you gave, the increase of roughly $384, does that include the first chunk that goes towards the high school?
For, if I remember the high school debt service charts correctly, the first five years is a ramp-up. So this is, the first year, there was really not a lot in there. I think $200,000 this year, we're at five this year. Before we get up to the meat of the issue, which is, you know, in the ballpark of 1,300 on the average single-family taxpayer that we projected at the time.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Madam Clerk, do we have any other, anyone else for public participation, public comments?
No, no one else.
And seeing no one, there's no one else in this studio then. So with that, I would say our next step then will be to take a series of votes. There are four votes that are, unless there's any other comments of the councillors, there are four votes to be taken. If we could take them one by one, and Councilor Chines perhaps, if you wanted to read those.
Certainly. I move that the town council adopt a minimum residential factor of 0.906978 for the determination of the fiscal year 2025 tax rates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Vincent. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilor Carney?
I'm actually not happy with this, but I'm going to vote for it. And I think, I want to get more educated over the next year as we face even greater debt on what's happening to our industrial base. And I think, I think there are comparisons that, and I'm not going to ask you tonight, the fact that, what's convincing me here is the fact that's been such a small increase in the value of the commercial properties over the last 20 years. Is that something that's just here, or would you say the same factors applied in Burlington, with Cummings properties a bit? And obviously, we didn't see the reduction that we're seeing in Boston either. I mean, Boston would be showing numbers that are lower this year, much lower. So I'm kind of caught up in that. I appreciate what you were saying, Ed, and I'm a true believer in that, that, and I think we ought to be looking at being more conservative. But at this point, for this year, I'm going to call for it.
Seeing no other comment then? Yes, Councilor Butler.
If this gets voted down, what are the next steps?
Another motion.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve something tonight?
Well, I mean, we have to send up tax bills, we have to set a tax rate, so, yeah. I wouldn't just pick a number out of your hat.
Mr. Vice Chair threw you to Mr. Mayo. I mean, if we don't have our free cash certified until we...
No, we have our free cash certified now, as of July 1.
Okay, okay.
But setting a tax rate is going to be an issue.
Got it.
And setting up bills. So collections will be a problem.
I like my hair where it is.
Yes.
We all have calculators, though, in fairness. Any other comments? All right, seeing none then. There's been, there's a motion that's been seconded relative to the minimum residential factor, so this will be a roll-call vote. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butler?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
And myself as a no, so that would be five. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, Councilor Butt is here. Good evening, Councilor Butt.
Hi, thank you. Just in time, I'm a guest.
Yes, okay. So with that, it's six in favor, one opposed. All right, next.
Mr. Vice Chair, move that the town council vote not to adopt a discount for open space.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll-call vote. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Butler?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven, zero. Next motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, move that the town council not adopt the residential exemption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, second by Councilor Vincent. Any discussion amongst this body? Seeing none. Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Butler?
Yeah.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries seven, zero. Final motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, move that the town council not adopt the small business, sorry, small commercial exemption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion amongst this body? Councilor Butler?
Yeah, I thought we had this, and we're deciding we're not going to have this going forward? Is that the case?
No.
We've never adopted it. Oh, you've just, in terms of researching it, you were saying that we don't have anybody who would meet this criteria.
Yes, and it's only been adopted by a handful of communities. I believe the number is less than 10.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Councilor McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Butler?
No.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes. Ah, sorry, yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries six to one. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close out of the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing, assuming no discussion. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Councilor Butt?
Yes.
Councilor Butler?
Yes.
Councilor Vincent?
Yes.
Councilor Chines?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, seven, zero. So we've now closed out of the public hearing relative to setting tax rates. Thank you very much, Mr. Santinello, as always, for your thorough presentation.
If I could ever be helpful, just reach out. Happy to sit down and talk to anybody, anytime, about taxes. Take care.
Thank you. We'll move on now. Apologies to those who were looking to participate in public engagement that got dropped down on this agenda because of the public hearing. So now we're on to item five, public engagement. First, seeing no one in studio, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who has signed up online for public engagement?
Yes, we do. We have Scott McCauley.
Okay. So, good evening again, Mr. McCauley. If you could, please, again, just stick your name and address. And just a reminder, public engagement is limited to three minutes. This is not intended to be a back-and-forth. The council will hear your comments and concerns and then likely address them at some later points in time.
Yes, Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I sent an email today to various members on the board and town council, and to Mr. Mayo. I went down to town hall today to review the documents pertaining to the referral that was sent to the planning board for the MBT for 3A, and it was not there. I also was looking at the information that's there for the other 3A documentation, and none of the stuff added up. So I think that information probably should get shared with the rest of the board at some point, discussed, so that somebody could go back to me and let me know what the deal is with that, because I don't seem to think that it was probably done correctly. I could be wrong, but it seems to be incorrect from what I've seen. Somebody brought to my attention, interesting as I bring up some of these things, that multitudes of people in town reach out to me now. Somebody brought to my attention that on the MBTA 3A, on the voting, that Councilor Butt may live in one of the districts that's in this zone, and according to the conflict of interest laws in Massachusetts, that she probably should have recused herself from any deliberation in voting on this. So I just wanted to bring that up and bring that to your attention. And that's all that I needed to say tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Just on the first piece, town council mullin relative to the MBTA communities and anything at the clerk's office. Are you aware of any issues that we have currently, or anything that we should make sure the town clerk does just before town meeting?
So I was concerned when I read Mr. McCauley's email earlier today, and I spoke to Mr. Mayo about it. He went down to the town clerk's office to see what is on file, because the thing that most concerned me was the possibility that there were, there were supposed to be plans that were bearing a particular date, and that those plans were not in the town clerk's file. There were plans in the town clerk's file, and Mr. Mayo found at least one with the appropriate date on it, October 3. So it may be that Mr. McCauley found a plan that was there that was undated, but the right plan, that is with the right date, bearing the right date, was also in the file. Now, Mr. McCauley had other concerns, such as that there wasn't a proper scale on one or more plans. I don't know if that's true, but legally, that doesn't have any significance. You don't need a particular scale or any kind of scale on a plan. So...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm kidding. So there's no concern at all then about the scaling you're saying? I didn't mean to cut you off. I apologize.
Yeah, legally, legally not. I mean, I don't mean to minimize Mr. McCauley's concerns, because he brings up concerns about whether information that's available to the public is as complete as it might be. And that's a kind of qualitative concern that I don't opine on. What concerns me is what is legally required, and from that perspective, I'm convinced that what is in the town clerk's file is adequate.
Yes. Councilor Carney?
Well, and as for the allegation of, allegation is the wrong word, the suggestion that there might be some kind of ethical issue for Ms. Butt, I, I'm not sure exactly what action members of the town council have had to do in connection with this proposal. Certainly, if you are a member of the planning board and you are conducting a public hearing on a 3A plan, and your property is within, is one of those that would be rezoned, my advice would be that you should recuse yourself. So, but she is not.
Thank you for that. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else for public engagement tonight?
Mr. Vice Chair, I think Councilor Carney has a question.
I'm sorry, Councilor Carney.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, anyone else?
Yes. Yes, we do. We have Julie.
Yes, hi, good evening. If you could just state your name and address, and just a reminder that you have the three-minute limitation I explained earlier.
Thank you. Julie Stock, 4 Central Street. I'd like to talk to you about two issues. The Historical Commission was established by an act of town meeting under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8D. And the Warren School Center building is on the National Register of Historic Places. The specifics of the plan intended to spend $400,000 of ARPA funds on the renovations to make the building a multi-generational meeting space have not been made public. I'm asking if there's been a change in the window design from the one that was presented and soundly rejected by the Historical Commission in May at a public meeting that I attended and multiple other residents and neighbors were allowed to participate in. There has been no information shared to the town, or the neighborhood, or even the Traffic Advisory Committee about additional space usage, additional building usage at night, and added visitor parking to the building and to the street along the building. There are about 35 non-street parking spaces available for senior citizens who use the senior center. The streets and sidewalks in the area are in very poor condition, and senior citizens and others may have to park on the street more than usual, because there will be other uses in the building with their visitors as well. The streets and sidewalks in the area are in very poor condition, and senior citizens and others may have to park on the street more than usual because there will be other uses in the building with their visitors as well. And they will have to navigate the poorly kept road and sidewalk surfaces that have very inadequate lighting at night. The Traffic Advisory Committee should be appraised of the situation, as spaces currently available for parking for those who live in the neighborhood will also be lost because of increased building usage during the day and perhaps at night. We have many multi-generational meeting spaces already in Wakefield. That we have the popular BB Library and the Civic Center that are also located in a place that support downtown businesses. We have at night, non-utilized school libraries that are dark, school gyms that are dark, and school auditoriums, which are already ADA compliant. They are all multi-generational meeting spaces. We have space at the Doyle, the Woodville, the Dahl Bear, the Greenwood, the Walton, the High School, and the Gallivan Middle School. They all have well-maintained meeting space available for multi-generational purposes. Some of us should be invited into all public schools as often as possible, all of us should, so that we can see the wonderful buildings that our taxes pay for. In regard to the item tonight about idling signs at schools, please discuss the list of exemptions that are in front of you that have been provided by Lieutenant Anderson. Most situations that are presented at public schools are exempt from the law. I hope police are not to take on a job of daily enforcement. I hope that it's the council's expectation that teachers and aides and other school staff will not be charged with confronting parents and family members and cars that are idling too long. Because as you know, additional demands on school staff time require negotiations with their various unions, and that's completely out of control. Motor vehicle violations are the most difficult situations for police, so I'm hoping that the school committee is charged with coming up with a policy in regard to making sure that the intent of the law is handled safely and keep school staff safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Scott.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other participants this evening?
No, we're all set.
Okay. I will note that we did receive two written submissions that I'll quickly read now. The first is from Tiana Velswitch of 28 West Water Street. She writes, "I am writing as an individual in support of posting no idling signs at the schools, which I learned to be an issue in town through the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Besides it being the law to have signs posted, I think it is in the best interest of our children's health and the environment for Wakefield's residents for the town to discourage unnecessary idling. I agree with comments from the October 21st meeting that additional measures to raise awareness about this topic, such as on the website and in school and PTO newsletters, would be a prudent additional step besides signage. Walking past a row of idling cars and their polluting exhaust on the way out of school is not a healthy, is not healthy for our children. Moreover, if we are, as a town, choosing to ignore this law and ignore our responsibility to discourage harmful idling, we are demonstrating to our children that we do not take seriously our responsibility to their health or the environment. Let's do the right thing here." Thank you. We have one other written submission. This is by Rebecca Nurenberger of 43 Madison Avenue, who writes, "As a parent of Wakefield Public School children, as, and an experienced nurse practitioner, I am happy to see the town considering a no-idling rule. Similar rules have been enacted in surrounding communities in demonstration of the community's commitment to cleaner air and to the well-being of citizens, particularly children and other vulnerable neighbors with asthma and conditions making them susceptible to the ill effects of engine exhaust. Exhaust emissions include pollutants that can exacerbate short-term breathing problems and in the long term contribute to cancer. Turning off one's engine is a small and simple step with significant measurable benefits. I encourage the town council to enact a no-idling rule for Wakefield." And those are the two written submissions. So with that, we will move beyond public engagement. Thank you for those participants. And we'll move on next to item 6A, which is urban traffic presentation. And I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Joseph Anderson. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Thank you. Good evening, Joseph Anderson, Lieutenant, Chair of the Traffic Advisory Committee. I appreciate you having me here tonight. Typically, I'm before you for things like sign requests and things that are more regulatory in nature, but as luck would have it, I'm asking you to spend some money right after you set the tax rate, so it's kind of a little bit unfortunate for me. But I, I'd like you to view this presentation by a company by the name of Urban SDK and give it some thoughtful consideration. As a town, as you know, we're, we're growing tremendously. Traffic is probably one of your top few complaints as town counselors. It's one that I receive at the police station regularly, emails every single day about traffic-related complaints. What we've done, and when I say we, Traffic Advisory, along with our town engineer, Bill Renaud, is a few things. And one in particular, we've developed a traffic calming policy that we had hoped at the time during COVID would help us to identify actual issues in town and then vet those complaints and concerns, and then rank them against maybe some other engineering projects that the, the town has for the next fiscal year. But what we found in the interim is a lot of complaints, to the point where I'm really unable to adequately get back to our residents and members of the public, vet those complaints, and see really where the, the true issues are in town. The other issue that we're having is trying to proactively enforce our traffic laws. And I think that as we grow as a town, that's something we really need to have some type of system in place that helps us as a force multiplier. This system, I believe, and the, the presentation, hopefully you'll, you'll agree, will give us the tools necessary to allow our officers to target enforcement where it really matters. As it stands right now, we, we take advantage of some state grant funding. Every season, there's a different, a different mobilization. Could be a drink, you drive, you lose. It could be speed enforcement, click at a ticket, or what have you. But primarily what our officers are doing, besides looking for drunk and erratic drivers, are speeding cars. And then maybe if someone's not wearing a seatbelt, they educate them on the seatbelt component, if it's that mobilization, or texting and driving. Unfortunately, what they end up doing is being directed to areas where there's a lot of complaints. And complaints aren't necessarily synonymous with where the actual problems are, right? So, you know, Ms. Jones at 123 Main Street might be complaining because she perceives a speed issue, but the real problem might be on Water Street and a certain segment of Water Street during a certain period of time. So I'd like for our officers to be more proactive and be able to address those complaints. Another thing that this, this platform would help us do is overlay our data set with the Mass DOT traffic crash portal, which is available to everybody. It's a pretty robust platform. You can type in pretty much anywhere in the Commonwealth and see traffic crashes, fatalities, injuries, and pretty much anything that we report as police officers on traffic crashes. What we'd be able to do is hopefully be proactive in our enforcement efforts to target certain areas of town and prevent crashes before they happen, reduce the number of injuries. I think that that's something that we should be putting at the forefront of our priority lists as a town. We're also meeting a lot of demands policing in 2024. You know, Chief Score, he often talks about how the call volume or numbers of calls that we respond to in a calendar year doesn't really adequately represent what our officers do day in and day out. A lot of times, there are on very sensitive calls. A lot of them have to do with mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, where they spend sometimes one or two hours on a call in order to peacefully resolve it. And those never make the news. It doesn't really make it in the item. No one really knows the, the amount of times that we're responding to calls and resolving these issues in a, a safe and effective manner. But it requires a lot of man hours. And what it, what it doesn't allow for is traffic enforcement with any real consistency, right? So I'm hoping that something like this would be something we could try as a town and see if we, you know, get some good value out of it. I think engineering has a lot of use for it. I think it may help us eliminate some redundant systems that we have in place that really aren't as efficient, but they were the best we could find at the time. There's some equipment that we've, we've been able to purchase through grant funding, but the, unfortunately, the grant funding doesn't support the, the cloud-based data collection that we need perpetually as time goes on, and that can be pretty pricey. So as it stands right now, we're pretty much supporting through our police department, supporting through our police department budget, a couple of our pieces of equipment that give us a data set when it's deployed, but then once that moves to a different street, I, I lose sight of what's going on in that street. And I forget who said it, it might have been Councilor County, but a data set's only as good as, as it was during that time period, and if a certain, you know, number of weeks, months, or years pass, it's still. This would provide a real, real-time, live data set for every street in town, including traffic volumes, 85 percentile speeds. It would allow us to have a data set to compare and contrast when we have developers presenting their traffic impact assessments. You know, we had one on the hot street, for instance, and their traffic impact assessment showed like the second week in December. I think that's a far cry from, you know, what we see day to day on the hot street. So to have that available to us, to have them go back to the drawing board and have our own data set is important. I think another thing that's very important, too, is these traffic calming measures that we consider as a town, when we do implement them, does it work? Number one. And we have a mechanism to review that. But this would enable us to review that a lot easier than paying for a consultant to go out and do another traffic study. We would just have it at our fingertips, along with a historical data set. And does it displace the problem somewhere else? So what I've learned since 2019, being the Chair of Traffic Advisory, is that every action has an equal but opposite reaction, right? You restrict parking on this street, everybody's parking on that street now, and now that street's complaining. Well, the same goes for traffic calming. And what we don't want to do is displace the problem, we want to address the problem. So I think it can accomplish a lot for us, not only on the engineering side, but on the enforcement side, and help us as we grow. But with that, I'd like to introduce Nick DiTomaso and Micah Dickman. Chair, if you could bring them over if they're on. They have a fantastic, real brief presentation. They actually have a sample data set of the town of Wakefield. I think it's for the month of August, so they'll probably zoom in and pick a street and show you exactly what's going on there, and they'll tell us a little more about it.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, Lieutenant Anderson, and thank you to all the constituents that are on tonight for giving us the opportunity to speak to you guys a little bit about Urban SDK, a little bit about where we come from, and what we have the ability to help you guys accomplish there at the town of Wakefield. So what I, I wanted to do is I'm not going to take up too much time tonight, but I do want to tell the council and the members here a little bit about Urban SDK, the genesis, how we got to where we're at, and then jump in here and actually show you guys some sample data from the town of Wakefield. But before I get into that, I'm Micah Dickman. I'm the head of revenue here at Urban SDK. I'm a veteran. I was served in the United States Coast Guard, actually there in the north end of Boston, on Coast Guard Cutter Escanaba. That's where I started my career. Actually went on to work for DHS as a contracting officer for the entire state of Florida, and then ultimately came over to Urban SDK to help start the company, because I really, really care about what you guys do at the localized level. It does not get talked about enough, and a lot of what we are going to discuss here and what I've heard tonight is local government, whether that's PD, you know, public works, engineering, the fire department. We're asked to do a lot with a little, and that's not changing, right? We've got to maximize what we have, and that's why we have, we have developed the mechanism that we have here at Urban SDK. So we are a Jacksonville, Florida-based company, got started in 2017 from the city of Jacksonville. We just were going to council meetings, seeing how we could get involved with the local community. Grant came out at the time that was called the Smart Cities Challenge Grant. That was essentially federal grant funding going to local communities to help develop solutions that would help benefit decision-making at the localized level when it's around in traffic and transportation. We were approached to design a solution for our local community here at the city of Jacksonville, and that's just what we did, essentially providing them with an output every month with all of their historical data that would tell them how fast people are going, where is their congestion, where are their safety issues on their roadway? So they could educate themselves internally, educate the council there within the city, and then our constituents as well as they call in, you know, asking questions. From there, the Florida Governor's Office invested in our company, as well as the Florida Department of Transportation. We then took this program to 28 other states, where what we have the ability to do is provide you guys with speed, volumes, congestion data, all traffic data sets down to every road within your jurisdictional boundary, every single day, every single week, every single month. Some of you may be saying, well, what's that, you know, due for the town of Wakefield? And the first is public complaint, as Lieutenant Anderson alluded to. And unfortunately, 80 to 90% of public complaint at the localized level is perception issues. It is an astronomical time suck, resources suck, when it comes to our engineering departments, our local PD, and deploying our resources out there, when really we're just going out there for a perception issue. The next component, once again, what Lieutenant Anderson had iterated is, let's say that we do find an issue within the community that either qualifies for traffic calming, or there is a safety issue that is apparent on a particular roadway. We spend an astronomical amount of time, money, resources in investigating and then implementing on that roadway, but most of the time, never figure out if it's effective or not. With the program, you're able to quickly see, was this equitable? Did we get the desired outcome, or did we just displace traffic to a nearby roadway? And now we have a problem to address, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road from now. The third thing, and this is the most important thing, and I preface this all the time, which is really why we got, started doing what we're doing, is not waiting until there's a serious injury, a fatality, or a public complaint to take action. We don't have to anymore. It's an option at this point. With this program, what you can actually see is, based off the time of day, the shift that our officers come in, or when, when engineering wants to be able to monitor the roadways, you can see where are our highest rates, where are our problem areas? Where should we be thinking about deploying resources to before we get these calls, before somebody gets injured or somebody gets killed? And the last component is for local engineering and PD, when they get these calls, part of what they have to deal with is the customer service aspect, being able to disseminate and communicate this information back out to the public. And not taking two to six weeks to get back to them, 80 to 90% of the time, to tell them there's not a problem, be able to get back to them within five minutes, and help them understand why they're making the decision that they are. Ultimately, it's the best one for the community, it's going to be the most time-effective, cost-effective, and it's, you know, easily disseminable. But I'm going to share my screen quickly and let you guys take a look at some data there within Wakefield and what this program actually looks like. And if there's any questions I can answer, please butt in. I'm happy to answer anything around the program. As you come in, all reports are saved here. Any historical information that we aggregate from the agency or anything that we pull down from the state's database, whether that's local, local crash data, school zones data, areas of vulnerability that you want to highlight and be able to monitor with these data sets, here within the program would be saved here, along with any other reports that you pull within the program. But let's say that you got a complaint on a particular roadway, you would just come into your insights tool here, which is where you can actually go back 13 months of data for every road within the jurisdictional boundary. The reason for that is, once again, it's pre and post-implementation. What did we look like last year when we had this event go on? How did it affect our emergency lanes? How were our school zones affected during certain times of the year? And being able to monitor the trends of traffic within the community to allow your decision-making to enhance as we do think about making changes within the community, and once again, ensuring anything that we do from an implementation side, we can effectively track what was the outcome of that. Now, coming back to, for time's sake purposes, I will pull up our data here, which will show the boundary. I know it's not your specific boundary, this is a demonstration data set, but we do have most of it here. And now what you're looking at is data on every street within the town there. Average 85th, 95th percentile speeds, travel time delay proxies, so travel time index, planning time index, buffer time index, letting you know where congestion lies on your network, and then AADTs, annual average daily traffic counts. Providing you with a traffic count on every segment of roadway within the boundary. Now, let's say that we got a complaint surrounding speeding. We wanted to come in and understand, you know, is this a perception issue, or is this something that we should be concerned about? What you could do is come in here and just type in the address bar for any constituent's dress, any public facility, school zone that you would want to take a look at, and it'll drop a pin and take you there. Or you could simply come in, hover over the segment of roadway, and then run your analysis, where you can see the rate of speed on that roadway is 20 miles an hour. More importantly, you can see the specific days and time periods throughout that week or that time period where speeding was either most prevalent or where it did not exist. So here you can see the 85th percentile speed for the entire month of October was, I'm sorry, not October, August, was 20 miles an hour. The highest rates of speed that we were observing were mid- The highest rates of speed that we were observing were midday on Tuesdays and mid-days on Sundays. So if we wanted to think about sending an officer out there, taking action on that roadway, we know what time we should be doing so. Now, if we want to think about asset deployment, where do we send our officers to make sure that their time is most effective, right? When they do have the limited time throughout their shift, be able to go out and do enforcement in the areas that they're patrolling that day, ensuring that they're going to the right areas to have the greatest outcome on public safety. Let's say it's, you know, a Monday. Like today, we want to see for the six to six shift, where are the highest rates of speed on our localized roadways, our most vulnerable areas? I'll just come in here and select Monday, and then I'm just going to turn off every other time period except for the six to six shift, which three through six indicate here. I'm going to apply that filter, and then I'm just going to take a look at localized roadways, residential areas, school zones, and let's say we just want to see everywhere where the rate of speed is thirty-five miles an hour and above. Now we know that the segments that have still populated here on the screen have an eighty-fifth percentile speed on Monday for the six to six shift of thirty-five miles an hour. Not just that, you can come in here and see the specific segment of the roadway. So not only are we going to send our officers to the right roadway for the right period of time where there is speeding prevalent, but we're going to tell them which mid-block intersection specifically has the speeding. When you look at Broadway, it's not this segment, it's not this segment, it's this specific segment that potentially has a speeding problem for the six to six.
And Micah, just with that sample data set that you sent over, I identified three areas that really, I mean, the roadways themselves don't surprise me, right? But the other segments surprise me. There are areas that we don't really have a traffic crash history there, we don't necessarily have complaints on that segment of roadway, so I've already added three directed patrols based on that that are more proactive in nature, because if we do have a crash, it's going to be more significant in nature, because the eighty-fifth percentile speed is eleven to twelve miles an hour over the speed limit, which is significant for eighty-five percent of the cars to be traveling at that speed. But there are areas that maybe the streets on our radar, per se, as a complaint street, but not necessarily that segment. So even with just the sample data set, I've been able to add three priorities to our directed patrols, along with times that they can be out there, which is important. The other thing that I found, too, was I have a developer's traffic impact assessment that came across my desk for a future Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, and I took a brief look through their TIA, and I ran it against this system here, and I already see some things that make me raise some eyebrows, that I might have some questions for their traffic engineer, I'll put it to you that way. So just in the brief period of time that I've had access to this, which has been a handful of days, it's proven to be pretty impressive so far.
Presentation?
Do you want to continue on, or you pretty much?
I'm happy to field questions at this point. I'm also happy to continue to present, but if the council has any questions, at this point, the presentation, I'm happy to field those.
Sure, I think they'll probably ask some questions, and then if there's anything to wrap up with at the end that you left out, but I think this is probably a good time to move on.
All right, so Counselor Carney has a question.
Can this be brought down to a specific date? And my concern is, we're doing a lot of traffic calming in the comments, a lot of plans put together, and, you know, a student of Waze, a Google Maps, if you prefer, and spending twelve years driving home from Worcester, you realize how far you can get diverted by an incident and where that incident may happen. And so I'm looking at the situation where I don't want a street that's parallel to Ninety-Five. Our street, Salem Street, Prospect Street, all of these are streets that I've been directed down when I'm coming home, because, and I don't know what, where it happened. So I could be a resource for you, because I'm saying, okay, there's a traffic jam on Ninety-Five, my wife is trying to get home and she can't, on Lowell Street. And this goes back to Peter May and I discussed, or late Peter May and I discussed this years ago, and we were blaming it on the cheapest gas in town at the corner of Salem, New Salem, and we didn't know what was causing it. And then you realize that people were starting to get used to Waze and Google Maps, and they're following it. So I'm interested in the fact that when we start doing some traffic calming on North Avenue, that that's going to affect Main Street, it's going to affect Lowell Street, okay? Because all of a sudden, something happens, and they're going to have less alternatives to follow. Now, can you imagine having an incident on Ninety-Five and me being diverted down Twenty-Eight down Prospect Street? And that's happened in my twelve years a number, number of times. So you don't know how you're going to be, how it's going to direct you, and I've lived to, I bless Waze, I still use it today, even though I have shorter commutes, because it tells you where the issues are. Can it be, can I, if I could tell you, look, we had a traffic backup this past Tuesday at two o'clock in the afternoon to six o'clock, you could look on here and find out where the traffic has increased on other roads?
So I'll let Micah talk a little bit more about it, but the short answer is yes. And what's interesting from a police perspective, in addition to traffic, I'm often tasked with some of our major events, the planning for those. And what Micah and I talked about was like the Fourth of July. We can actually see from a police perspective, in previous years, where is the traffic? Where are the bottlenecks? From a, from an evacuation perspective, too, where do we not want to be sending traffic if there was some type of an incident? So yes, it does provide for that historical data that we could go back to a certain point in time, and I think, looking far beyond traffic, I'm concerned with the emergency planning end of things, and I think it could be very valuable. But Micah, do you have anything to add on that?
No. Thank you for the question, Councilman, and you can go down to a specific day and time, down to a specific hour on a roadway, to allow you to see exactly what you said, was there diverted traffic, did an implementation cause a problem, or if there was an incident like a serious fatality or injury on that roadway that caused a mass delay, you'd be able to see the cause of effect of that and where people are actually routing to. In the case of what Lieutenant Anderson had just iterated to, annual events like Fourth of July here in the city of Jacksonville, a lot of our events are tied to golf events, sporting events, the Jaguars. The problem with those events, a lot of the time, they clog up a lot of our emergency lanes, and especially for fire and rescue, trying to be, you know, within a six-minute response time when you've got massive delay on A-1A, our main corridor, main thoroughfare that runs through Duval County and St. John's County can cause a lot of problems. So they use that historical data to be able to know where to deploy those resources during that time period, when those events take place here in the coming years, 2024 and 2025.
I would say in fairness, that those gas prices are pretty good, though, too. Counselor Shines?
Just a couple of questions, although if we have, there's more in the presentation, I can also hold them if...
I think this is a good time for questions, Joe.
First of all, thank you for sharing, you know, Lieutenant Anderson and to the team for sharing this. This is really interesting, and I have to say, it's sort of amazing to be able to see data at this level of granularity when it comes to traffic counts and speeds. I mean, it really does speak to like what a world we live in that all of this is available. A little scary, but, you know, a good thing in this case. Just a couple of questions on, you know, sort of the kind of business model for all of this. I'm curious, you know, obviously Jacksonville's a much larger community than Wakefield. I'm curious if you can speak about, you know, other clients that you have that are sort of similarly situated to Wakefield in terms of size and scope, and, you know, while I'd imagine at some point we'll be talking about kind of a financial proposal, if you could speak even just at a high level of what the pricing model is that you typically see?
Yes, absolutely. So we do serve larger communities from the Jacksonvilles, Miamis, Orlando's, Dallas PD, but then we also serve communities in Alaska that have a population of 500 people, Manette, Wasprings, Colorado, 1,700 people, and then there within Massachusetts. We recently just partnered with East Long Meadow, Randolph, South Hadley, and Foxborough. They are all clients of Urban SDK, and they actually just joined the program here over the last couple of months.
I think more locally, Wubin reached out, they were interested in your product as well.
Correct. And then Waymoth is getting ready to come on as well. We just started reaching out to folks in Massachusetts here over the last six months.
And is the pricing for the program, is it based on sort of the data that's shared, so that you've got kind of scalability for a smaller community versus a larger community? Could you speak a little bit about that?
Yes, absolutely. So the pricing model is built off of the number of modules that you procure. So as you can see, you have speed, you have travel time, you have, you have volumes, and it's also based off population and roadway mileage, center lane mileage. So our linear referencing system indicates that your center lane mileage, let me pull that up here, is around 118 miles, which is 1,602 counts of data that we would provide to the city every week and every time.
Okay, thanks. And one final question, is there the ability to externalize some of these data, and do you see that in other communities? And I'm asking almost, I can imagine sort of, I don't know, maybe this is dangerous from your perspective, Lieutenant Anderson, but I'm wondering if there's some ability to almost kind of make this available to the public, to say, okay, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, I live on a cut-through street, I'm concerned about, you know, speeds between, you know, on the average morning. Is that something that we have the ability to sort of make public for people to kind of look at on their own?
It's as easy to share as clicking an icon and sending it right to you through email. Yeah, it's a very, very easy system to navigate. And it could be used by the entire town, so from engineering to police to Tom Walsh with the emergency management, we could, we could use this for a lot of ways, like we were talking about the Fourth of July, a lot of ways that aren't just speeding-related, so.
Well, no, I really am intrigued, too, when you talk about emergency planning, and you know, we've talked about this with, you know, getting over to the west side from the fire station, where, you know, if you have a train coming, you know, I am kind of intrigued on how you can use this to kind of plan out some of those routes as effectively as possible. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Vice Chair Borowski. Lieutenant Anderson, is the Traffic Advisory Committee still evaluating this? Eventually going to give us a recommendation, or do you already have a recommendation?
Our recommendation, based on our last meeting, is we would love to begin utilizing this. You know, the next step that Mr. Mayor and I spoke about was trying to identify a funding source. Unfortunately, as far as grant funding through the state's MRS grant, the equipment component is for things like handheld radars, sometimes speed trailers. I was able to get a StatTrack, which is like a tubeless data collection device, but that, again, requires the town to support it on the annual subscription, and it's battery-powered. I put it out there for three days at a time, I get, I get my data set, and I have to charge it again. So, you know, we do have some things already, but nothing near as robust as this, and this would be something totally, totally different and be a game changer for us with Traffic Advisory and our ability in the police department to respond to complaints. So our recommendation is to give it a go, let's try it for a year. If we can identify a funding source, that's our recommendation.
And Mr. Mayor, have you had an opportunity to check with any of your colleagues in the four towns that were mentioned?
I didn't, I didn't know about the four towns until this evening, so no. I will call over to Foxborough, though. Just because I know the person.
This is the only questions I have.
But I've been to the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, and love it, do love it. I think it's really a great tool for everything that they talk about today.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Counselor Butler, do you have?
Yeah, I guess, and I'm not sure, you know, you mentioned the number of data points you'd collect and the number of, and I assume we'd get that sort of as a weekly update. I mean, I think there's been a lot of dancing around it, and you're talking about a funding source. What are we talking about here? Are we talking about like, is it four figures? I don't think so, because I assume that if it was four figures, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So what are we talking about?
With all the add-ons that we were, that would be useful for the town, which would be traffic speeds, volumes, congestion, like it to give us a kind of ballpark, I'm not sure if you fine-tune that anymore, but like if you have anything for us.
Pimped out for the 112 miles.
Yep. It's $19,500 per year, and that's an annualized cost. It's a flat rate fee, it's unlimited usage, and that includes all the onboarding training for all departments within the agency, and then ongoing support for any of the members of the agency that need continued training or if you have a new staff member join there. But that's everything included in that price.
Yeah, you're getting the GPS data, is this all sort of scraped from Google and Apple and whatnot, and from that GPS data, and then anonymized, obviously?
Yes, so that's, it's all connected vehicles data. So we collect it from an OEM that's recognized by US DOT and FHWA as a credible source of information for traffic counts and speeds, but that's collected through a variety of different manufacturers and hardware, as you just said, Apple CarPlay, Waze, Sync, OnStar, smart technology within vehicles is where we're aggregating that.
Are you guys profitable yet?
We are.
Well, no, I asked that because you raised a million dollars in September, and I guess one of our concerns is, is if we go and make an investment in a software company that is, you know, burning a bunch of cash and doesn't have a bunch on hand, that we may get stuck holding the bag after two months. So it's a legit question in terms of, talk to me about, why'd you raise money last month or a few months back?
So we raised money through the University of Florida, the University of Florida Traffic Institute, and the School of Artificial Intelligence made an investment of a million dollars into Urban SDK. Part of the reason was strategic. We now own all of the IP that comes out of the University of Florida Traffic Institute, their School of Academia, and it's never bad for a local partner and a university that has credibility of the University of Florida to take on an investment from them for a very minimal amount of equity, and from a strategic standpoint, that's why we did it.
Okay. That's fine, good answer.
Any other questions? Online, Counselor Butt or Chairman McLean, anything? Chairman McLean?
Yeah, more question for Lieutenant Anderson. Lieutenant, you had also mentioned that we may be able to eliminate some redundant systems. I don't think that that's a deal killer on this one, you know, that we get offsets, but I'm just curious, what kind of costs do you think we could not incur in the future because we now have this system?
So, I mean, I'll give you an example, it's a great question. You know, one of the traffic studies that we did more recently was for a traffic calming application that was on Merriam Street, that was this year, and just the scope of their work was just to look at speeds and volumes. It's the bread and butter of Urban SDK, and that costs 3,300 right there. So we've had two traffic calming applications so far this year, we have a third that's probably coming online, there's a fourth that I haven't really heard much back from yet, but, you know, there is a component of signatures and some paperwork to be done. So, you know, different neighborhoods progress at different levels through the application process, but that's, that's two in one year, and there's a third that's probably coming online soon, and there may even be a fourth. So to not have to incur that 3,300-ish figure for a traffic study, it depends on how many of these traffic calming applications we get, and that's just for traffic calming, that doesn't include everything that engineering would need it for. You know, our town engineer, every three years, has to provide a, an application or a data set for the quiet zone exclusion, so there's, there's some work involved in that, and obtaining that data set for what he needs. On the police end, we have four of those speed alert signs that I was able to obtain through the MRS grant. The signs will flash, but as far as getting any type of data set from those, it's 1,500 per sign per year times four. We haven't, we haven't been able to monitor those since, since that one year initial that was covered by the MRS grant. We just, we have the signage, it'll go up and flash the sign, the speed of the vehicles, but I can't obtain a data set from it because it's too costly for us to incur $6,000 a year for four speed alert signs. You know, so what we do right now is the speed trailer and our StatTrack, that small tubeless device I talked about, that's 950, and the speed trailer, I think, is 1,500. So that's, that's what we do maintain yearly, and we probably will continue, because those have their own unique kind of value, but we may eliminate the other StatTrack. But, uh, we may eliminate the other StatTrack, but, uh, the speed trailer, there's a lot of components with it that, in addition to data collection, it allows me to program it remotely and, uh, display messages and things that make it convenient. But outside of that, we could eliminate, which we already have, and not worry about the, uh, speed alert signs, and then any other, uh, studies that we would need as a town. Uh, there may still be some, you know, the engineer, uh, has, uh, has consultants do things like, you know, turning movements and things that really can't be done with, uh, with a software. So, it's not going to eliminate every, uh, every possible, uh, traffic study in town. But, um, as far as, uh, what we've seen at traffic advisory, it would, it would eliminate quite a few.
Right. Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I, I, you've also mentioned, you know, being able to use it to kind of, uh, fact-check some of these traffic studies. That's another aspect. Seems like there are a ton of uses here, uh, for us, so I'm not as concerned about the offsets, but, uh, it sounds like there are a few of those as well. Uh, thank you very much, Lieutenant, and, uh, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman McLean. Um, let's face it, I think the biggest issue for many people in town is roadways, be it the roads themselves, the quality of the road, or, or speeding and traffic. Um, and I think traffic is probably becoming, you know, um, the, like, number one or tied for number one with the condition of roads. Um, and so, if we're looking to be responsive to the people of this community, then I think it's important to, you know, figure out ways that we can improve that kind of quality of life component for them, especially if we have the ability to have offsets or synergies with other departments, it sounds like. I know in speaking with, um, uh, engineering department, there could be some utility there, uh, as well, and, and there's a real benefit. Because, um, if we have ways that we can improve the vehicular traffic flow in this community, that is a real daily improvement to someone's life. Uh, and, and I'm not overstating that by, you know, by saying it. You know, sometimes I'll, I'll pull out of my own driveway some mornings and it, it'll be really backed up in certain ways, or people be flying through, be flying past, and it, it can be concerning for folks. And so, I, I think we can't lose sight of, you know, there's, there's that intangible, if you will. Um, and it, and I think it really does meet a need that a lot of residents have raised for us. Again, being fiscally responsible about the way we approach it too, and looking at ways in which we can offset that cost or look for funding sources. So, I think at this point, um, Mr. Mayo, there's, there's no action that, that this council can take relative to this. Um, it would be an expenditure that would have to be determined.
I think that I could, um, work with Joe and, um, and Bill and come back with a list of offsets. And, um, I think there are a couple grants we'd go at. Uh, the community grant, uh, comes out in January, comes to mind. Uh, so, and come back, you know, whatever, maybe by the end of the year to say, hey, we can pull this together for this year. Or our, our next year, depending on what, what we can do.
Right. And just, you know, I think I speak for the council, and it sounds like there's, there's general enthusiasm from what I'm hearing relative to this, and a lot of, you know, optionality and functionality that, that would be, that would be a benefit if we can, you know, crunch those numbers to make it work, Steve, on that side. Great.
I don't, I mean, you mentioned, I, I think this is much more a traffic calming device than a traffic alleviation device. I think, like, frankly, Waze and Google will traffic alleviate, figure out the best, the fastest way to get there. But this is more about, and I guess my other concern around a device like this, and you, you mentioned Broadway, and you mentioned, oh, we want to sort of stop things before accidents happen and whatnot. And I get it, but I also, I don't want this to become, you know, I don't want the offset to this to be, you know, $19,000 in local town speeding tickets. Uh, it is, I guess, one of my other concerns around this is, you know, in terms of us using this as an extractive measure.
So, I, I can tell you that primarily traffic enforcement is educational in nature, and a majority of our stops result in warnings. Um, you know, I, I don't want to put out how, how many and encourage people to, uh, to be heavy on the gas, but, uh, it's educational in nature, and, uh, and what we do get in Chapter 90 funds really goes into the DPW's revolving account to maintain roadways. So, it, it just wouldn't be something that, uh, would be a possibility for us to, to say, write more tickets. That way we can maintain this, but it's, it's a, it's a fair, fair question.
Yeah, I mean, I think, either way, Elm Street and Broadway didn't surprise, Elm Street especially, I'm like, it's super wide, it's like, there's never cars on it. I mean, you, you're hard-pressed to go only 30 miles an hour there. I, I'm just saying.
So, you've heard.
So, I've heard, yeah. Rumor has it. My daughter who's getting her license, she's making bad influence.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. Uh, seeing no other comments, then it sounds like there's some more work to be done on this. Thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you, presenters as well. A very innovative product, for sure, and, and hopefully we'll be able to make some strides in this regard.
Excellent.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just keeping us moving along, item, item six. B, this is the no idling signs at, at the schools. You'll recall that this, um, had been raised and, and I think largely discussed, um, at, at our last meeting. Um, the policy of, of Chairman McLean is to allow for that, the, the period after, um, something is presented to be, you know, considered further and then ultimately voted on at the following meetings. So, that's, that's where we find ourselves here, um, tonight. Lieutenant Anderson, I'll turn the, the floor over to you, uh, relative to the traffic advisory's perspective on this.
Thank you. So, we did discuss this at, uh, our last traffic advisory committee meeting. We reviewed the, uh, the language, and, uh, I, I did some research with some neighboring communities. Some had the signage, but it wasn't exactly as the, the law seemed to require. Uh, they weren't actually able to give me rationale for why they had the signage, or, you know, how it came about, um, whether it was from complaints or trying to comply with, uh, the Code of Massachusetts regulations or Mass General Law. Some had, uh, no signage at all. So, it was kind of, uh, it seemed pretty inconsistent throughout, throughout the region. Although I will say, more often than not, uh, cities and towns did not have the signage. And the few that had it, uh, it didn't conform with, uh, what Mass General Law and the Code of Massachusetts regulations seemed to require. So, from our traffic advisory committee meeting, we sent it to, uh, Town Council. Uh, Town Council, uh, reviewed a legal opinion that, uh, that we got from Counselor Vincent, uh, which was very well-written, and I wish that I could get more of those for, uh, things that we consider a traffic advisory, because it made things, uh, a lot easier to digest. Uh, but in the end, uh, we did receive an opinion back from Town Council that the signs should be erected. Uh, and, uh, it states as follows, "Each public or private accredited preschool, head-staffed facility, elementary, vocational, secondary school, school district, or municipality shall erect and maintain in a conspicuous location on school grounds no idling, permanent signage as described below. All such signage shall be sized and contain appropriate-sized font as to be visible, uh, from a distance of 50 feet." And the exact wording, uh, to comply with the law is, "No idling, penalties of $100 for first offense and $500 for second and subsequent offenses, Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 16B as in Bravo, and 540 CMR 27.00." So, our recommendation is to, uh, have the signs installed, um, at all schools in Wakefield.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Vice Chair Dombrowski. Uh, I have a few questions for a few folks. Sherry, can you pull up the sign, uh, the New Orleans signs that are at the Galvin Middle School, please? First question's from Mr. Mullen. I know we talked earlier today in an email. Even though Mass General Law 90, 16B applies to public and private school property, I didn't feel comfortable later on when we go to vote, to vote for anything other than the public school property. Because I'm comfortable that we have jurisdiction and authority under the Town Charter 84B and under ECO Division 2, Chapter 211, Traffic Rules and, and Orders. But I wasn't comfortable whether we had jurisdiction over the private schools. So, would you concur with me that what we should vote on tonight is just to comply with the law as it pertains to public school property?
Yeah, I agree. I, I read the regulation as saying that if you have a school, be it public or private, you're supposed to have these no-idling signs. But, you as the Town Council are direct, are, are authorized to direct only the public schools in Wakefield. You can't compel any private school to spend money on a, on a sign.
Sherry, can, can you pull up the picture of the Galvin, um, signs, please? Not the motion yet, but the picture. Uh, this question's for you, Mr. Mayo, and also, um, I have an email from Doug Lyons. Has the Town Council previously discussed and decided this issue since the law was passed in 2009, approximately 15 years ago?
No.
The signs that, uh, you've, you've seen the signs of the Galvin Middle School?
It's also in everybody's package.
Right. To your knowledge, do you know how and when those four no-idling signs were installed at the Galvin?
I, I don't. They, they may have been there since the Galvin opened, but I don't remember, recall ever seeing them.
And so...
To tell you the truth.
The Town Council didn't make the decision to put those signs up?
No.
Um, Dr. Lyons also indicated he did not know how those signs were put up. Have you, Steve, or I asked Dr. Lyons the same question, have you ever received any complaints from anyone, um, about the no-idling signs at the Galvin Middle School?
Have received no comments either way.
Mr. Mullen, did you get a chance to review those signs at the, um, at the Galvin Middle School? Have you had a chance to see those pictures?
No, I don't believe in that.
Would you agree that if you, if you're seeing it now on his screen, because Sherry's evidently not being able to pull it up?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm getting it.
Would you agree that the language that's on the no-idling signs at the Galvin School do not comport with the language required by the state law?
That's right.
And Lieutenant Anderson, same question for you. Have you, you or the police department received any, um, complaints that you're aware of from parents or grandparents regarding the fact that there's no idling signs at the Galvin Middle School?
No. No complaints.
So, you wouldn't anticipate that if the signs go up at all the other public schools as required by the law, that you're suddenly going to get a flood of people complaining that those signs are up?
I'm, uh, very cautious to answer that because, uh, I, you never know. But, but based on, based on, based on that, uh, we have not received any complaints. And the only real feedback I've received, uh, traffic-related, was because this was on the agenda and people were in favor because of, uh, health reasons and things that you, you read into the record earlier.
All right, I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
Counselor Carney?
Yeah, I, I did meet with Tina Velwich, uh, the chairman of the Environmental Sustainable Committee on Saturday. We had a great, great conversation. And she and I agree, would like to take it from the standpoint of an education situation. Um, many, I've spoken about it before, but I, but my whole career in, in bus, uh, in the bus business, I know a lot about exhaust and the effect that it can have on, on people's health and what have you. Um, but we also, at the last meeting, we discussed, you know, the implications of, you know, uh, are we going to have the police department down there every day enforcing it when it's 20 degrees below, you know, 20, 20 degrees out? And, uh, you know, a parent shows up with a, a minor child in the car, and she's waiting for the other child, and she keeps the car running for a bit to keep him warm. Um, they want to go to the school department through the representative, through the, uh, Environmental Sustainability Committee, using it, use this as an educational piece, to try to teach people the effects of just, uh, uh, irresponsible idling, uh, in, in regards to, uh, you know, indifference to those times, those short times of privilege where people are just there to, to keep, you know, the children in the car warm or what have you. Um, so, it's twofold. I, I think the, the signs should be put up, the legal signs should be put up. Uh, but, uh, the Environmental Sustainability Committee is going to do a little extra in, in speaking to the schools and trying to get them educated.
Thank you, Counselor Carney. Any other comments? Counselor Vincent?
The only other comment I would make, uh, the question, first question I have is, there are exemptions to the no-idling, uh, signs at schools, allowing folks to keep the car idling, to keep it warm when the temperature's at certain degrees.
There are, and there's also a, an idling law in general that's for, for outside of school property too, just on, on, uh, other roadways. It's not something that we routinely enforce. It's, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of other competing priorities. So, idling is not something that, you know, if we obviously got a complaint from the school, we would go and address it and, uh, and handle that in an education, in an educational manner. But unless somebody wasn't receptive to that, but that would be no different than any other traffic law.
All right, thank you. This, again, just feels like, um, a solution looking for a problem. Um, I, I don't think that people are just, in my experience, is randomly idling outside of schools. You know, I think that if, you know, if it's hot and the air conditioning's running, or if it's cold and the heat's running, um, most parents are there for short periods of time, whether it's pickups or drop-offs. Um, and I think that this sign, when you look at the sign that, that is, that you referenced, Counselor Vincent, that's a pretty basic sign. It sends the message. The language here, like, all the, the words that are going to be on the sign, like, that's a lot. So, it's not, it's not going to fit comfortably on the kind of signs we, we have in our packets. Talking about a very large sign in order to have that. And I think that it seems like overkill to me. Um, I agree, you can have an educate, because we're also saying that, oh, by the way, we'll put up the signs to be in compliance with the law, but we're not going to really enforce it, wink, wink. So, it's kind of, what's the point of doing this, you know, ultimately? Um, it, it, this, this, I don't know how this kind of all, you know, came to be, you know, as big of an issue as it was. I know that Counselor Vincent just raised it, you know, as, as something to be, be aware of. Um, but if we're to do anything, I would think, at, at, at most, we want to do what is at the Galvin, because we're at least then putting, introducing the idea to people, and, but in a way that's easy to understand versus, you know, people are going to think, what, what the heck is CMR? Like, MGL, C90? It just, it feels like way overkill. And I understand, you know, we could, it's, you know, being compliant to the letter of the law, but we're also saying we're not going to force the, the letter of the law anyway. So, it's a little bit like, seems a little bit intellectually inconsistent. Counselor Butler?
Sure. I, I, I agree with Counselor Dombrowski that this not only seems intellectually inconsistent, it is, I mean, this is bordering on a, we're about to do a ridiculous implementation that pretty much no other town does. And to put in, if we have four of these at the Galvin, if we put in four of these at everything, and perhaps the town engineer might have some idea, what does it cost to put in a metal sign into cement and the printing of it? I might have found your $19,000. Um, so, I do think this is, you know, this is us being, you know, following the letter of the law to a ridiculous extent that nobody else has done. And by the way, that we haven't done for 15 years. And granted, ignorance is no excuse, and like, now that we know, I guess there's a feeling that we have to go along with this. You know, I, this should have been a sleeping dog that should have been let lie. And I agree completely with, uh, Vice Chair Dombrowski, that the amount of verbiage that you're going to put on this sign is, you know, especially, you know, no, we're not going to enforce it. We're definitely not. So, can we just, like, I don't know how you put this genie back in the bottle, but you really should.
Well, I wouldn't wait as we could table it, uh, for now. Uh, Counselor, uh, Chairman McLean has his hand up online.
I do, I do. Um, I would like to address this, uh, tempest in a teapot. Um, we are not going with the language we currently have because it's non-compliance. Um, the public participation, and I've been to ESC, watched ESC meetings where they talked about this, and they weren't exactly sure what to do about it. The reason is because it's our job. And if, you know, if Counselor Butler would go all the way to Reading, go to the Reading Y, he would see some of these signs as well.
Do I see them at every other school in Reading? No, I do not.
No, but did you say that you don't see them virtually anywhere?
Right. You're talking about putting them up everywhere.
We're talking about putting them up at every school, which is required. Now, we're also seeking to comply, even though some of us aren't thrilled with it, with the MBTH Communities Law. I don't think we get to pick and choose our laws. And I don't think that this is going to strike terror into the hearts of moms, which I've heard last meeting. Because, first of all, I did all the drop-offs, so did Mr. Butler, so did Steve Mayo, so did a lot of us, so did Mr. Chines. It's, it's moms, it's dads, it's grandparents picking up the excess, and there's been not one complaint about these other signs. So, we can't believe, I can't believe that this is going to strike terror in the hearts of people. You know, so, let's comply, let's put them up. Um, it's very easy. You can just Google, uh, mass no-idling, idling law, click a couple links, and you are informed. You're informed that there are all these exceptions that have been discussed, uh, by Lieutenant Anderson, and which exist, ladies and gentlemen, in your package. Just look at them. And relative to, you know, Counselor Carney's experience with buses, the regulations indicate that bus drivers will be trained, so they know about. the regulations indicate that bus drivers will be trained, so they know about this. This is a tempest in a teapot. Let's just vote on it.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dombrowski. I respect both Vice Chair Dombrowski and Counselor Butler, but I don't necessarily appreciate how I've been questioned as far as why I brought this forward. So I'm going to talk for a couple minutes on this. Identified an issue, as I always do, I review the facts, the applicable laws, regulations, our charter and our bylaws. When I conduct this review, I always do it through an unfiltered lens. I never view it through a political prism, which would distort my objective base analysis. I then look at town council precedents. I research prior town council decisions, deliberations and decisions regarding the issue at hand. And then I seek subject matter expert opinion if necessary. In this case, in September 2023, I found a mandatory language in a 2009 state law that appeared to apply to Wakefield. I determined that the town council had the authority and responsibility to implement the law. I further determined that the town council had no prior discussions or decisions regarding this issue over the past decade and a half, and subject matter experts had not opined on this issue. My naval officer legal and judicial experience and training compelled me to pursue this issue and seek subject matter expert advice. Accordingly, as I described at the last meeting, I sent my legal analysis memo to Mr. Mayo, copying the then-chair Chines on my email, and asked Mr. Mayo to forward it to the Traffic Advisory Committee in their capacity as the subject matter experts. I note that I only sought the advice of the Traffic Advisory Committee in September of 23. I have not communicated or consulted with any other board, committee or commission. This is all my own personal research. In full transparency and openness, my two-page memo has been available to all of you in the public for a number of weeks. I stand by my evaluation analysis of this issue and for bringing it forward to the town council's attention for discussion and decision for the first time in 15 years. I also disagree with the comment that it's a solution looking for a problem for two reasons. The problem, number one, is that the town council hasn't discussed and decided a mandatory state law for a decade and a half, even though we have the jurisdiction, authority and responsibility for doing so. The solution was to discuss and decide the issue tonight. The second reason that this is a problem that needs a solution is there, to me, is a systemic problem of a lack of attention to detail by the town council to decide and discuss issues. Unfortunately, the 15-year delay with these no idling laws at the schools is only one example of lack of attention to detail. Others are the fact that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was the cornerstone of Wakefield's 2015 to 2020 housing production plan, had no discussion for the entire five years that the, that the plan existed, and then for two years after it was expired. After seven years, 2022, the town council finally evaluated the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was then passed unanimously at the spring 23 town meeting, the eighth year after it was recommended. I'm simply taking a state law that was required, did some analysis, went through all the proper chain of command and sending it to the Traffic Advisory Committee and eventually to Mr. Mullen to get a legal opinion as to whether we have to comply with this law or not. This is not Counselor Vincent's law. The language on there is not Counselor Vincent's language. This is language that the Massachusetts State decided 15 years ago we were supposed to have. I'm just satisfied, and I don't care how the vote turns out tonight. I'm just satisfied that finally, on this date in 2024, the town council is doing what it should have done many years ago and discussing and deciding the issue.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Counselor Carney.
Well, I'm the only one that can speak back to 2009. I had no idea that this law existed. So I couldn't have brought it up then, when I was on the Board of Selectmen. Chairman, I vote that we put the minimal language up there. I vote that we install signs that say "Active loading only" to a certain area in front of the schools and "No idling zone."
So I hear a motion as described by Counselor Carney. Do I have a second? All right, oh.
No, no, I'm not seconding the motion.
I'll second it for discussion purposes. Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, you know, I believe that Counselor Vincent has a motion that was drafted to comply with the law. I would suggest that we vote against this motion so that we can consider that motion, given that I think candidly, this is a pretty sort of open and shut issue. I mean, there's a state law, you know, we took an oath of office when we all became town counselors to follow Massachusetts state law. I think it's as simple as that. And so, you know, with respect to Counselor Carney, I would prefer that we consider and I hope that we do approve the motion that has been prepared, you know, with the proper legal research by Counselor Vincent.
Yeah, my effort was to tone down the language. It sounds, you know, like you're making it a criminal action there, which gives people the wrong opinion. I think you can say it more softly and still comply with the law. You don't have to put, you know, every time I ride around the lake, I, you know, don't feed the fowl, you know? It's like chapter and verse. You know, I think that's pushing it a little bit too far. This is a town of Wakefield. This is an elementary school especially. I don't think you have to quote chapter and verse. I think we just say no idling. And through, at the efforts of the community and the student, school councils and what have you, you can educate people. And that's what we're trying to do, is educate them not to idle. But in specific circumstances, I think we all agree that you're not going to, you know, you're not going to place it. So there's two sides to this issue. I just don't like the idea of putting chapter and verse on it.
Counselor Chines.
Just through you, Mr. Vice Chair, to Mr. Mullen. My understanding is though the language and the citations to the law and CMR is actually required on the signage?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look it up now. I don't have, I don't have the materials that are before you. But my recollection is that the language is prescribed by the regulation.
So I, you know, I fully am with you, Counselor Carney, on the educational piece. I don't think the sign makes much of a difference candidly from a behavior perspective. But again, to me, it goes back to what are we required to do under state law? And I think that's something that we as a council should support.
I would just point out that we have many thousands of state laws. So we have spent an awful lot of time having dug down into this kind of arguably rather obscure state law that's not generally being enforced around other communities. Counselor Butler.
I probably, I'm against the amendment, not because I'm against the sentiment, but I'm like, if we're going to put up a sign, then we might as well have it be comply. If we're going to maliciously comply, then let's maliciously comply. But I think I'm voting no because I'm going to continue act as a common sense versus a strictly, from a strict legal standpoint in terms of complying with Massachusetts law. I know you said we don't get to pick and choose which laws we do, but in this one, we went and picked this one off the tree. So yes, we've picked this one. So there's thousands of them out there that probably are not picked. Granted, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I'm in the right here, but I really don't want to. I think that this is, we talk about wasting taxpayer funds. This feels like, you know, feels like an unfunded mandate from the state.
Okay, so we have a motion that's on the floor. It's been, Counselor Vincent had his hand up.
That's okay.
Anyone else? All right, so this motion then is as described by Counselor Carney, that would seek to have the signage put up with the more limited verbiage to it. So we'll take that motion first. So Chairman McLean.
No.
Counselor Butt.
No.
Counselor Butler.
No.
Counselor Vincent.
No.
Counselor Chines.
No.
Counselor Carney.
No.
And myself, no, so that motion is defeated unanimously. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dombrowski. I do have a motion. Sherry, would you kindly put it up on the screen so folks can read it while I read it? Since it's a little bit wordy. I move that in accordance with Wakefield Town Charter, Section 8.4B and Wakefield Eco Division 2, Chapter 211- Traffic Rules and Orders, the town council shall authorize the installation and maintenance of no idling signs at all Wakefield public school property. The location and wording of each no idling sign shall conform with the requirements set forth in MGO, Chapter 90, Section 16B, and 540 CMR 27.00.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? Online, nothing? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote. Chairman McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Butler.
No.
Counselor Vincent.
Yes.
Counselor Chines.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
And myself is no. The motion passes with a 5-2 vote. Madam Clerk? All right, thank you. And thank you, Lieutenant Anderson, for your presentations this evening.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mullen.
Next up is Item 6D, road trenches.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Item 6C?
Item 6C is updated on 464 Main Street. That will be rescheduled for our next meeting on November 18. 6D road trenches, we have our friends from DPW this evening.
Good evening, folks. Bill Renaud, town engineer.
Good evening to you both. Thank you.
Sure.
So I actually, I asked that this road trenches item be added to the agenda for this evening. And I was hoping to get just a little bit of clarity if I could from you. Just so we're clear, WCIT, if we could go back just a couple photos if they'll show. That one there, yep, the second? Okay. So the reason that this came up is that there appears to be, from a roadway perspective, a lot of inconsistency in the way that trenching is done. And it has resulted in, I think, a lot of folks noticing that there's caving in, it's uneven, harder to drive on. And so I was hoping that you would be able to just answer some questions relative to kind of what that process looks like.
Sure.
Going across town, it feels very inconsistent, if you will. Some roads definitely, no worries, feel like they're more challenging than others. So it impacts the drivability, I think is probably first and foremost. So I asked WCIT to put up a few photos. If maybe you could just kind of, I'd talk about, you know, I guess, one, let's talk about trenching. And there's one, there's a trench in particular on Church Street. It's one of the photos that should be in this mix.
Okay.
It's not that one.
I didn't see it in the slideshow, but.
No. So relative to, so let's maybe stop there. That's great. So in this, in this photo, the right lane would be, you could see the trench kind of going down the middle there.
Yep, so this is Lynn, this is in Lynnfield.
Right.
Yep.
It's right by the middle school.
Yep.
Can you help us understand really what this, what the process and standards are for trenching?
Yep, yeah. So we have draft standards and details that we currently have that lay out not only just the trenching and the patching and the depths and all that, also the widths. So in general, when we're patching a utility trench, what we want to do is we want to offset the joints. We don't want to have a complete vertical face that comes all the way to the pavement, to the top of the pavement. We want to basically have a, you know, an offset, typically we do about a foot. And that kind of lets it stagger up, so we don't, we don't see as much settlement. This is actually a good example of that. Typically, what you'll do is you'll have a trench installed, you know, one calendar year. You'll let it go through a free thaw cycle, and then you would come back and repave. That gives the time for the trenches to settle out. And then you would, you know, obviously mill out another foot beyond it to get you this type of end product.
And when we're talking about these trenches, it could be various utilities, right?
It could be, yep, yep. So we have water utilities. So a good example would, you know, we've talked a little bit about North Ave, not to bring that back up again, but one of the things we're looking to do there is to pave over the water trench that was installed probably a couple of years ago at this point, but that's in our queue to be done. So same, same process. We would mill a foot beyond it and we would repave in that same area.
And who do we have that is doing this? So we have, like, we have Gas and Light, National Grid has been in town with the project.
Yep, so, yeah, that'll be the next article.
Or, you know, water, right?
Yep, yep.
Can you kind of talk about like what the process is for that between whoever the entity is that's doing this? Because again, there's inconsistency.
Sure, so I'll explain. So we have a bunch of different types of trenches. This can be us, it's public work, so obviously water-related, sewer-related, drainage-related, that all be us. In general, we're trying to do it with roads that we're paving so that we don't end up with a trench. We're actually doing it prior to paving it. We can also have it from Gas and Light. So Gas and Light comes in if the project is going to be within three feet of their existing gas main. They would, they wouldn't have to come here for a grant of location. So our next item that's going to be discussed with National Grid is for a grant of location. So it's more than three feet away from the current location. So they come back to you folks to grant the new location within town. In general, we don't really get that from Gas and Light. They'll apply to me directly through our right-of-way permit program. So you may recall, when I started here six years ago, we implemented a new road revolving fund and a lifecycle maintenance fee. So that's for just in general, folks that are cutting into the roads, they have to pay this fee to us. The gas companies in general are exempted from this, especially the investor-owned utilities, because they have to be able to plan their work so every community can have its own separate, you know, fee. It'd be impossible for National Grid to plan work, for example, right? Locals, there's been some debate on whether or not they can be charged that or not. Ultimately, we've had some dialogue with Gas and Light. They don't believe they should, as I would probably would take the same position if I'm them. But all of our private utilities, so anybody that has to run a water main up, a gas main up, any of those types of things that a private, you know, contractor would be doing, that comes through our right-of-way permit program. If it's related to a private development, that's paying a lifecycle maintenance fee. And the idea of that fee is that we're able to go back in and either do more paving work with those dollars or we come in and we can do targeted patching in certain spots. But ultimately, that application, you know, we have provisions in there that we're looking at it after one free thaw. If, depending on the size of it, you may have to go back and replace it. If it's not, if it doesn't settle and it's in good shape and it's smaller, we'll typically let that go as long as it holds up over a free thaw cycle.
Just to piggyback on that too, so any private, private party interested in cutting into the roads, so the only way that they can do that, they have to be licensed and bonded. So there's a bond component to that too, which is basically a surety to us that, you know, what is proposed to be installed gets installed. And if for some reason it doesn't, it starts with a conversation. And then it may or may not be sometimes, we have to give a little bit of a reminder about that. But so there's some checks and balances to all that, that part two on the private party side as well.
I just resent the photo of Church Street to WCIT in hopes that they might be able to pull it up because I think that's probably one of the more egregious examples. Who is responsible for that?
That's Gas and Light. That's a Gas and Light one.
Because that's one of the worst.
Yeah, it's not, it's not great. We've definitely talked to them about coming back in to do that repair. So that I believe is in their queue. I'm not sure if it's getting done this fall or if it's going to be a spring situation. But we've been in touch with them about that. You know, I will highlight that, you know, when I first started here, I don't think that, you know, our departments were really that coordinated. We've really spent a good amount of time working with Gas and Light. We have, you know, kind of strategic meetings twice a year to talk about where their capital plan is, where ours are. So they're not cutting into, you know, roads that we just paved. They're staying ahead of us with a lot of their programs in streets that, you know, we would want to go into. That obviously makes it a lot easier for them because they don't have to pay for the full, you know, for the full patching that needs to be done because we're going to be right in it, depending on the type of treatment we're doing. So all of these things have definitely, you know, improved over the years. I mean, we still have some work to do on some aspects of it. But I would say that, I mean, we're light years ahead of where I started here, which is good. I mean, we've definitely, they've come to the table to, you know, to discuss this with us and communicate with us. So that's a, that's definitely a good thing.
But is everything being permitted currently?
So they'll come in and they'll, they'll apply for permits. I wouldn't say that every time they get the permit in hand, but they definitely, they definitely do apply for them.
Because I'm looking on this screen now, so that's Church Street. And you can see the trench kind of going down there. It's narrow.
Yep.
It's uneven.
Yep.
It's difficult to drive on and it's a major thoroughfare.
And this is a good example of why you have the overcut. So if you're looking on this picture to the left-hand side, see all the cracking that's, you know, next to the patch?
Right.
Well, that's all caused by the work that was from the patching, right? So that's, that's why that happened. So sometimes as you're excavating below, some of the soil can slough in and you don't have anything supporting the pavement. can slough in, and you don't have anything supporting the pavement. Your backfill, it doesn't get compacted, and you get things like that. So, that's why we have the standards the way we do them, so that they'll be coming in and making sure that they, you know, they're overcutting. That's a big one that we stress to be done. So, this would be an example of one that would be overcut.
So, but that clearly is not to your standards?
Currently, it's not. No. No, currently, it's not.
And then when this happens, because I'm thinking about the road bond that we approved at town meeting, the taxpayer dollars.
Yep.
How do we address, because there are, across town, there are towns that this kind needs to get addressed. Is that coming out of that road bond?
So, how do I want to say this? So, we do have a portion of patching within that bond. That was one of the treatments when, you know, I made my presentation about how all of the different treatments work. So, we do targeted patching. But in general, the projects are being approved now through the right-of-way permit process. We have an opportunity to go back and either use that bond that Joe had mentioned, or in, you know, 90% of the time, the contractor or Gas and Light will come back in the following year, and we'll communicate with them to make sure that that happens. So, that's how it's done. In general, I'm trying not to. We also have the life-cycle maintenance fee. That's a biggie. So, that typically, we're pulling in somewhere around $75,000 to $85,000 in that. It's gone up, one, a couple of years, up to $120,000 in a year. And then what we do is we'll use those funds towards, you know, some of this work. But, you know, most of the stuff you're seeing is stuff that I would say is six-plus years, seven-plus years, you know, previous stuff that was done. There's definitely been an improvement in the overall trench conditions. But like anything else, we can always improve kind of how we coordinate, and we try to do that, you know, annually.
Because I'm looking behind you at Linfield, the screen behind you.
Yeah.
And that's the overcut, as you've described.
Yes.
That's a much smoother way of driving. Then look at this, and it's awful, and it creates a lot of problems, you know, for folks.
Yeah, for sure. And, you know, I think it's something that we can have a dialogue on with Gas and Light and make sure we, you know, kind of bring this home a little bit more, that, you know, council has some concerns. But, you know, this is a great example of why you want to have that overcut and why you want to have that wider patch, because that stays together. That patch, I can tell you, was done well before I started here. I remember driving down it on my way to Concord back in the day. So, that's been there for probably 10-plus years. And it's, it looks like the typical part of your roadway. You don't see any real deflections anywhere, especially in that stretch right there. That's a good stretch. But that's a good example.
Comparing it to this Church Street, which is like light-years different.
Right. So, and another piece, so, you know, we did some work for our water main loop that we did with Linfield Center Water District. And so, there's another good example of a water main that was done. That sat for a year. Some of those, you know, had settled. We may patch it to keep it together. But then, we were required by the state to come back and do the same idea, mill beyond it and repave it. So, you know, this is kind of the standard operation of how most folks manage this, similar to what I was doing in the other town, too. So, it's all about just kind of bringing this home and, you know, seeing the improvement, which, you know, we're getting that coordination with Gas and Light. You know, but like I said, you know, maybe another step beyond that, we can tighten some of this up, too.
Any comments or questions, Counselor?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for what you did down on Lowell Street. We have been a victim for some time, because we have a gas reduction facility across the street.
Yep.
From College Park. And for 15 years, we've heard the trucks going by, and we hear the sound of the trucks going over what you've brought up. And it's not right. I mean, if someone ought to have the right, someone should be responsible going back the next year if it sinks.
Yes.
And go over it. And if you need our help, cooperate and coordinate that, we should offer it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Questions or comments? Anything online, Sherry?
No. Nothing.
So, I guess, you know, the biggest takeaway is that it is concerning, because I think it is a quality-of-life issue for people who use these roads. So, I would ask that, to the extent you can work with Gas and Light to figure out a more consistent approach going forward.
Sure.
Because, you know, the juxtaposition of these two photographs in these two communities couldn't be more stark. And I really am concerned about the fact that we're diverting, you know, these road bond dollars for things that feel like, they really shouldn't be used for. I think if the overcuts seem like standard practice.
Yep.
And best practice. And I think they should be utilizing. When they're not, then I think there needs to be some responsibility and ownership of that.
Cool.
Because ultimately, it's the residents that end up feeling the brunt of that, which I know is something especially, you know, Church just being one example, but there are plenty of other that we can point to.
Yeah. We have our coordination meeting coming up in December, so I'll make sure that this is definitely a topic on it. You know, and hopefully, Church will be done prior to that. But if not, you know, definitely be on the spring list for sure.
Thank you. Thank you both for addressing that. Item 6E is a granted easement locations, Main Street and Greenwood Street. I'll defer to you both to present.
Sure. So, I believe we have National Grid on as well. So, you have in your packet a memo from my office from October 28. So, National Grid has been out on Main Street poking around and doing some test holes. We found out from their test holes that there was an issue with where they were initially proposing it. That's why we had to push it off a meeting. They've done some additional testing, and we're comfortable with the new location as well. So, really, not much of a change from what was in your packet previously. You have the grant-a-location document, and you also have project conditions that we're highlighting. You will note that overcut is part of this. It's a standard condition that we have in all of our right-of-way permits. It's also included in here, too. Gas and Light actually has agreed to take on the permanent patch component of this. So, there'll be some temporary stuff that'll be put down this year. That'll be maintained by Gas and Light. And then next year, they would be back in to do the final patching piece. So, that whole extra piece that we're talking about.
And again, from your perspective, best practice is to do the temporary, let it get through a winter, and then you do the permanent.
Definitely. Definitely. Yeah. In general, so, as an aside, even when we're paving streets, you know, any utility work that's happening, I typically am not in there that same year. Maybe for a reclaimed street, I would. But in general, I try not to do the utilities, as long as we can coordinate it efficiently. It definitely goes over one free-staw, even all of our work.
Just, if I could interject for a second, a little bit of history with this. Bill Benjow coordinating the road bond and things like that. So, for those of you out here listening, Greenwood is in our crosshairs. We know we're going to head down to that section of town pretty soon. Out in this segment of road, National Grid does have some transition main. It does have some things that aren't so great with it. So, it's something that I think that I just wanted to get out there early, before we get too far into this. It's certainly something that affects National Grid from a conduit, you know, reliability standpoint, but then it also affects the town, too, indirectly. You know, pinhole leak or something like that, you know, someone might smell gas. Now, you're dispatching fire, police, and whatnot. So, up until today, we had a sidewalk. We have some pretty important things down there that we want to make sure that we're taking care of, or at least we had them in our minds when we were crossing through. All the parties got together. We've made it to this day. So, looking forward to getting it replaced and checking another box before the paving comes.
Yeah. So, I mean, this was a priority for Gas and Light to make happen. Obviously, they helped coordinate all of this. And, you know, one of our priorities, obviously, like Joe had mentioned, is Main Street and Greenwood. Gas and Light has a replacement project out there. So, that is funded, I believe, through a grant that they just received, which is great news. So, that's a positive. So, that's all moving forward in the near term. And we get a lot of requests down there for either sidewalk repairs, roadway repairs, especially drainage. We get all that stuff. So, then this means we'll be planning to get in there the following year, let that go through his free-staw and work through it. One of the other good things with this, you know, they provided us a good plan to review. So, we know that nothing's on top of any of our utilities. We've had some issues with that in the past, and that's something that we've been working with Gas and Light on, too. So, you know, this process has been, you know, kind of a good, you know, template, I would think, for some of these things going forward for us. And, you know, I don't know if you have any questions for National Grid, but, I mean, ultimately, we're comfortable what's being proposed at this point.
Does anyone have any questions for either DPW or National Grid? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Vice Chair Nebraska. I know I sent gentlemen a couple of questions a couple of weeks ago, and Bill, you and I briefly talked about it. So, let me just recap it for the council.
For sure.
So, DPW has a design and construction standards and details document.
We do.
And in it, it calls for a traffic management plan, and says that that plan is supposed to be submitted 14 days prior to commencing work. But when I look at Section 7 of the project conditions of this petition, while it requires a traffic management plan, it doesn't have the 14-day requirement. You kind of explained to me why that is, Bill?
Right. So, part of this, this isn't just for work that we're coordinating with other utilities. This is for private work, especially. So, when you have larger projects, good examples would be the Cabot and Forbes project, where they have some utility changes, and they have some traffic, you know, configuration changes and what they're looking to do. We get a lot of town staff involved. So, Steve typically will coordinate a meeting, myself, Lieutenant Anderson will be there, Joe will be there, other staff, so that everyone's coordinated on the timings of different pieces. This is there so that the expectation isn't that you've submitted this traffic management plan, and we're reacting to it the following day and moving forward. National Grid's coordinating with us. So, it's, you know, that has already been provided. We have an idea of what they're looking to do. You know, so that's a biggie for us to make sure that, you know, we have that in advance. They're working with us on that. So, it's not as big of a concern in this project specifically, though.
It's really give some time and limit, you know, surprises if you can.
Yep.
And the only other question I had was Section 12 of the project conditions.
Yep.
Addresses the notification to the businesses and residents.
Yep.
How's that going to be handled? Like, what kind of notice is going to be provided? And when is the notice going to be provided?
So, that's typically provided by National Grid. That's done as far in advance as possible. With this new location, we don't have as much of an impact on the businesses right by the Greenwood and Main intersection, which is really why that was initially put in. We still want them to know about it, but, you know, we were looking at essentially running through that parking area with the initial proposal. That obviously would be an issue for those businesses. So, we want to make sure that they would know about it prior to. But now, they've moved it to the other side of the road. It's not as critical of a problem. There'll be some work around the intersection that will be a little funky with the traffic. But aside from that, they'll still have their parking now. So, that's, you know, why that was added in as a condition.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you for your questions. Counselor Vincent, any other questions? Counselor Mc... Chairman McLean?
Yeah, this is more a question to you guys, Joe and Bill, than it is to National Grid. My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we recently bonded up the last $2.5 million of the $10 million that was authorized by town meeting a few years back.
Yep.
Do you four, could you guys just kind of give us a heads-up on where and when that money might be spent? I think you've indicated, Bill, that after this project, we could be down in Greenwood. Can you just kind of give us an overview?
I can, yeah. So, our 2024, well, fiscal '25 bid was completed right around the turn of the fiscal year. So, we were waiting for the bonding money to be available to award the contract. So, that's awarded currently. It doesn't include Greenwood, as, you know, we designed this back, at this point, what, three or four months ago now, five months ago? So, you know, we would be looking at a future bond to fund that, or it would be done through remaining Chapter 90 funds and any other remaining monies that I have left from the road bond, once we're done.
So, the other $2.5 million, the current $2.5 million would be used where?
Oh, I wasn't prepared for that question, but we have a whole slew of streets. It's on our construction viewer. But I can get, but I can get that to you, for sure.
All right. Just curious. Just curious.
Yeah.
One of those ones, Don, agreement is going to get done this...
Yeah. We have some work in Greenwood. So, we're on Pittman, we're on Grafton, we're on Harrison. So, we're moving into Greenwood now with this current bond. We have Green Street. So, the water work that we completed is part of the tank, and some of the patching and work that has to go up into the, into the abutting neighborhood of the tank, all that's included within this bond in this current bid. And then there's some other streets that are escaping me at the moment. But there's definitely, I want to say, three or four other ones. But they're all small side streets, the other ones.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And I think as well, Mr. Renaud, as Lieutenant Anderson was presenting this software, there's benefit, something that I learned from DPW is that there's benefit to that as well, because not only are you assessing the street condition, but you're also assessing the travel volume and making determinations about paving, correct?
Yep. Yep. So, as we look, so we just recently did, so in preparation for the next ask for road money, we completed our townwide survey. So, we do a condition assessment. I do that on a four-year cycle. And we also look at traffic as part of that, too. So, staff has already gone through and kind of looked at, you know, traffic volumes based on either traffic studies that were done for different projects around town. And then also, for residential streets, you can kind of do a calculation based on number of houses. This will be useful for me, because then I'll start to apply that towards the roads. And essentially, we rank them based on what we call a benefit value. The benefit value is a ratio of project cost, road use. So, that's kind of really how we're figuring out which streets to go to. So, obviously, the cheaper street that's providing, the cheaper road construction cost that's on the highest-traveled street will be the higher priority, if that makes sense.
I think from a logistical standpoint, too, be able to pinpoint the times that were just presented to us, scheduling, to minimize the impact. Like you've mentioned, the quality-of-life piece, the road construction and disruption isn't always the most enjoyable experience. So, even just to be able to give that a quick look to cross-reference that as you're deciding when you're going to attack certain things, or do you need to condition certain bids, so you have a certain period of time where you're going to allow work to happen, and then it's off-limits after the fact. Do that a lot around schools. It's just another tool in the toolbox.
You just feel like deploying those dollars for maximum efficiency, but also maximum benefits.
Of course. That's the idea.
Which is really what you're achieving with that. So, right now, we're not maximizing that based about, we're doing best we can, but we don't have that level of...
We've done a version, we've done a version of it, but I wouldn't say it's as accurate as we'll get. So, this is going to be very useful for me. You know, we'll have numbers all-townwide, so it makes things a lot easier. And then, obviously, the traffic counts, I think Lieutenant Anderson had mentioned that. You know, we have a handful of these that happen. You know, I do it for the Quiet Zone, which just got resubmitted. We blew our threshold, so that's all good news. That went into FRA on Thursday last week. And, you know, we use it for other pieces, other projects. You know, some stuff, when we were doing, like, tip projects, they require a certain type, so those we'll still have to pay for. But, you know, this is going to be very helpful, at least from the traffic advisory standpoint. I see that as a big benefit for us.
All right. So, we have then this request for granted easement locations as detailed in the packet. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Move to approve the grant of easement location with the project conditions as outlined by the Department of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Vincent. Any further discussion? Nothing online, either? No?
One question I didn't get before was just the 1,165 feet that you're doing on, that they're doing on Main Street. Do we, and maybe you said it and I missed it, but do we have a ballpark of how long we expect that to take?
So, they're...
Once it, you know, once ground's broken?
Yeah. They tell us they're about 150 feet a day or so.
This shouldn't be a marathon.
It's not months.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking month is probably where I'm at.
A few weeks a month. Okay.
Yep. And keep in mind, this is all, you know, weather-dependent. So, obviously, we're getting into our point where we try to shut everything down, as long as the weather stays warm, as it has been. You know, we're happy to let the work keep going.
Great. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Chimes?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, a yes, 7 to 0. Motion passes. Thank you both for all of your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We get a few, I think.
You guys get to stay. Sorry.
On to item 6E, 6F, excuse me, which is ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act update. For those watching, you may recall that the town council has allocated ARPA funds of several million dollars. We get periodic updates from town councillor, I'm sorry, town administrator, Mayo. And I think we're at a point now where we want to better understand what monies have been spent, what monies are available, and what potential for real locations we could consider as a body.
And with the key points, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. But the key points being that money needs to be either spent, or under contract, or under an MOU. And we'll talk about those separately. First two, by the end of this calendar year, and the other, by the MOU by the end of the calendar year, but two additional years to spend it. So, you certainly don't want to leave any federal money on the table if we don't have to. So, we've seen these numbers before, and kind of after we got through all of the COVID stuff in the beginning and fighting it out with FEMA, you know, to cover some of these things. And that was always an interesting story way back when. We end up with, I call it the money that we actually have to have some fun with, right? So, here's what we have, and some things have changed over the years. So here's what we have, and some things have changed over the years and we've reallocated. So Energy Assistant Fund, which we, which the council approved on 11/14/2022, so two years ago, of that, 198 or so was spent, the other 200,000 or so was reallocated. Lake Quanah Power Cleanup, and we'll also call that the Vetsfield Park Parking Lot and that whole area, 44,000 has been spent. This is also part of the bathroom project down there at the Hall Park. And 755,000 is either encumbered or under contract at this point. Lake Pathways, that was reallocated at our meeting or two ago, and we'll go to that in a little while. Rail Trail Wakeview Mobility, this is down in the Rail Trail area in Water Street, that's been all basically, some spent, but everything else is encumbered or under contract. Some of these things haven't changed. Tree replacement, if you've been out and about lately, they are planting right now that the weather is cool and good for trees. A lot of trees being planted over town, so I, if you see them, I see them in Quarter Street, they just did them on Quarter Street, a few more in the lake, and they've been out really all over town this last week or so. Of that, 83,000 has been spent, 66,000 is actually under contract over the next year of plantings. Sidewalk expansion, 553,000 has been spent, 546 is under contract, and there's all backup in your package for this. WCAT expenses, that was reallocated at a meeting or two ago, although 137,000 was allotted, and they have come back to me and wanted that $235,000, but I said it was too late. MWI water truck, we talked about that before, that was all spent. And just to talk about the water truck, it is used at many events in town, and anybody who is renting or renting or paying a fee to use the common for any of these big events, they have the option to use the water truck or not. No one is forced, but if they do use it, it really is helpful to us because it cuts down on water bottles, cuts down on trash that we take away. There is a fee to use the water truck, which is helpful, which is necessary because we have to clean it and we actually have DPW personnel that have to, you know, man it when we're there. Conference room Zoom upgrades, you see it all over Town Hall, a lot of you have used it, particularly the public safety building, the second floor and first floor conference room, and I think there are, there's a meeting in the first floor conference room tonight of the Disability Commission using our hybrid setup there. ADA swing is completed. Civil War Monument Evaluation costs $9,850. Of the $10,000, $150 is reallocated. Title searches, which was for conservation, tax title land that conservation, the department was interested in, we allocated 25,000 on, again, in November of '22, and 23,250 was used, the rest was reallocated. Inspire Cafe, 150 was approved, 150 has been expended, and if you looked in there, they are going forward, they're getting closer, so would love to see that open by the end of the year. Assessment of historic structures, we decided that we could do this really through DPW and not spend 25,000, and that was reallocated at a meeting or two ago. On March of 20, March of this year, money was allocated by the town council, a million dollars for the Small Business Fund. Of that, $10,000 has been spent. I believe this is for the, although we have two liaisons of the department right here, I believe this was for the Speaker Series with the Chamber, and that, the EDC has signed a memorandum of understanding regarding that the money, the remaining money needs to be spent for the parameters that the town council voted on. Food pantry, I think a number of us went to the opening of their trailer, which really has made a difference for them, and that's all has been spent, the $40,000. Senior Center renovations, of that, 94 has been spent, 305 is basically under contract. I think this is probably a good time for me to address the window situation there. Two vinyl windows were presented to the Historic Commission. They really didn't like either one of them. There was one that I thought personally looked more like the, you know, the wooden windows. Because this is federal money, ARPA money is federal money, we have filed with the Mass Historic Commission to get an opinion from them whether those vinyl windows will be allowed, and we'll, I don't know, maybe we'll get that back at the end of the year, do we think?
They had a telephone conversation about it, and although they weren't completely forthcoming, it did not sound like it was too, too long. We're hoping, obviously, that it comes in so we can continue and don't have to pause anything, it can deliver the end product that, you know, everybody was looking for.
I will say, if you haven't been there, the rest of the work, which is really maintenance, which is, which is fine, it's replastering the walls, painting, the floors will be rugged in one area. In the presentation area or the stage area that I called it, it has been all sanded. Last time I was, and the beams all painted, it really looks good. The floor had not been refinished at that time, it's about a week ago.
Yep, so the floor, they were, the floor has been sanded, so they'll bring that to basically look like it's almost brand new.
It looks really, it looks really good up there at this point. Just hopeful I answered any questions there. Sidewalk extensions, those are under contract, are out of bidding, under contract, and I think that we're looking at, if I'm not mistaken, Bill, in that round, is that more looking at the area around Prospect Street and?
Parker.
Parker, Oak Street, Melrose Ave to Holland, so those are, you know, hopefully going to come soon, and we really looked a lot at walking and walkability as the council notes.
Yep, so that takes the money from, and the remaining funds that were left over from the 1.1 million, too.
Correct.
So that's all rolled into one bid.
Correct. Affordable Housing Trust, $200,000 has been approved. Of that, $15,000 has been spent for a housing consultant that we're going to share with many other, number of other communities in this area, and they have signed an MOU. Most of this money was going to rental and/or first time down payment assistance. We do have a couple of rental packages in right now, where people are actually looking to take advantage of the program, and one person was so touched, couldn't believe that the community would do that, would really help this person get into the apartment and was thrilled, so it's kind of a feel-good story there. On August 12th, which just seems like yesterday, town council reallocated some money, Lake Pathways to Lake Path and Drainage from Lakeside to Beacon, and that is $88,680. The Lake Hue Pedestrian Access to Galvin Solar Project, that's $150,000. And we cobbled together, or the town council cobbled together a number of items with the assessment of historic structures of 25,000, Title Searches 3750, Civil War Monument Evaluation, $150, and expenses, WCAT 235, to West Ward School Roof and Chimney Project. And if you go to what's happened there, the path drainage, Lakeside to Beacon is basically under, is encumbered or under contract. The Galvin Solar, we won't know till town meeting because that's a town meeting vote, but that would go towards that project there. And the West Ward School and Chimney is actually completed. DPW did that really quick, and so our Wakeview Museum has a new roof and the chimney was repaired, so it's a great job there, and I know that the Historic Commission was very happy about that. We talked a little bit at the meeting before, I don't want to belabor it, to go on to these MOUs or interagency agreements, and this is, is really came out from the Treasury, US Treasury. We talked to our auditors, and as long as these agreements are filed and signed by December 31st, they can use to obligate funds, will expand in 2025 and 2026. There are quarterly reports, so you will continue to get those, because I know you look forward to them so much. The two MOUs that we have, I talked about it, the AFT, Affordable Housing Trust, $15,000 for Regional Housing Service, we talked about that, and 185 for Rental Assistance Program. Again, that doesn't need to be paid, expended for two years from now. On the Economic Development Council, million dollars, the council has gone through and has kind of put money into certain areas. One is sign and facade upgrades, and I'll tell you that that program has gone out, and I think 27 or 28 applicants, so it's really been very, very popular. And we actually had $100,000 from the state, so when we added those together, that's $500,000 for that program. I'll tell you that right now, if you looked at all of the applicants, it's close to $571,000, so there may be some movement that needs to be done there. Digital Marketing, $60,000, that's been allocated, and that series is going to start to help some of the downtown businesses. I think it starts next week. Chamber Speaker Series, that's been paid, and that started as well, $10,000. The other areas that has not been, has not been expended out is Project Pop-Up, we know what that is, marketing and PR for the area, creative arts and events, which the EDC has been talking about. And a market assessment, which is very important and very helpful, we did a market assessment, I want to think, jeez, 15 years ago now. Demographics changed a little bit, that really helps in targeting and things like that. So the total allocated here has been 845,000 within that million. There's an overage on sign and facade, I would think that would be covered in here because that would really dress up the downtown, and leaves remaining funds of 84, 154. So, you know, why, you know, you have our update, and again, I don't want to leave any money on the table, and in going through this, Bill Renault will tell you that on the FIT Court, which we had to pay for the, making the ground, making the area ready for the FIT Court to actually be located there, and that cost us about $54,600. Bill Renault told me that I way overestimated that 100,000 in the beginning. I should have come to him first, and he scolded me, but that's okay.
It won't happen again. That won't happen again.
Won't happen again, no. And we also left, we got concrete for free and the putting the FIT Court together, the FIT Court itself was through an extra grant, too, so we didn't have funds there to allocate. So that is on the table and up for discussion, and the only other area in here that's really unallocated, at least within the, and what the different committees have come up with, is the 84,154 at the EDC. So that was a very quick wrap-up. I know there's a lot of background information in your package, so I thought I'd throw that out there, and perhaps some money might want to be reallocated today, so we can make sure we spend it by the end of the year, particularly the FIT Court money, so I'm ready when you guys are.
Thank you for that. Mr. Mayo, does anyone, on the council, any questions? Counselor Carney?
We had talked about that program to study traffic, is that something that could be covered by this?
It certainly, it certainly could. We could sign a contract in that for the next year, so it could be, yes.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you, thank you for the update, Mr. Mayo. A couple of thoughts. So first of all, kind of a pleasant surprise that it actually cost us less than the $100,000 we'd allocated for the FIT Court. I feel like that's a little bit of a gift that kind of.
That was completely me making a mistake, I think.
No, but, you know, one of the things that I would ask, I asked Mr. Mayo by email earlier today as well, you know, as we look at Molton Park, the FIT Court's a great addition, but, you know, there's some parts of that park, particularly the basketball court and the tennis court, that probably could use a little bit of love, and so, you know, as we think about, you know, sort of where to allocate those funds, you know, I would love to get an understanding of sort of what the cost would be to, you know, kind of do a little bit of, you know, sort of maintenance and kind of upgrades to those, just to make them a little bit more habitable. Similarly, on the Economic Development Funds, you know, it strikes me if, you know, we've got, you know, 27 applications in for the facade program, it strikes me that, you know, there might be an opportunity to kind of continue to keep that available, and so I don't know if from an MOU perspective, if we can kind of allocate, you know, the remaining 84,000 to that, you know, on the understanding that it would allow us to kind of accept applicants, you know, into 2025 as well, if that would be sort of satisfactory under the ARPA rules, or does it have to be more definitively committed?
Yeah, my feeling is it would have to be committed by the EDC.
Okay, so it couldn't sort of stay as sort of a reserve fund that they have two years to play with?
It could stay in there, yes, it could stay in there. It could stay in there, but I don't think we can tell, we shouldn't tell them what to do with it.
Got, but I guess my question is, do we need to do something with the 84,000 to reallocate?
No, no.
Or is that already sitting in the EDC?
That's already in the EDC.
Okay.
From that perspective, yes.
From my perspective on that, then, I mean, we, you know, talked about allocating a million dollars to them, you know, as long as it is committed to that and that it can't be clawed back for that reason, you know, I feel that it should stay as a pool of money that they have to their, you know, they have available at their disposal for whatever comes up in the next, you know, year or so before the dollars need to be expended.
If I could speak to that, too. I know in speaking with our Economic Development Director, Aaron Kokinda, there is a lot of interest, this first round of sign and facade has been some of our larger businesses, relatively speaking. There's a lot of smaller businesses now that are expressing an interest, and so I spoke with Aaron, and obviously, it would have to go to the council, but about this idea of perhaps having a second round of funding available. I think now that people are understanding it more, the digital marketing, for instance, 60,000 allocated for that, there is real interest in that, and there's also a real benefit to our, especially our smallest of businesses relative to that program. And a lot of smaller businesses now are, I think, are trying to figure out ways that they can make the, because this is not free money, this is, these are matching funds, and so a lot of our smaller businesses are trying to figure out ways in which they can come up with, you know, the funds to be able to do some of the projects they want to do. But it's, there's a lot of enthusiasm amongst our business community relative, especially to the sign and facade, and that provides a benefit, you know, like Steve was saying, it dresses up our town. There is real value to that, I think, so I'm protective of that.
Yeah, so I mean, hearing that and hearing that, I appreciate that perspective. I mean, to me, you know, if it is allocated into an MOU where there's not a danger that it's going to be kind of clawed back, I think it makes sense to let it live in that world and, you know, let the EDC do it, you know, we charge them to do with those funds.
I never make a recommendation on these funds, I agree with you guys, but I do think in this instance, the next item agenda is a, talking about town meeting and any money that could be put towards Article III, which is the solar project, I think would be helpful for us in many ways. Just my two cents out there.
Steve, just to clarify for folks, how much is at play here for Article III from here?
Oh, from here?
Yeah.
Oh, 150,000.
150?
150. That's already been allocated, yeah.
That would be taking the 84 from EDC.
No, 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 that's already there. That's taking nothing.
That's what we did two weeks ago.
Yeah, the town council did that, I think.
Right, I'm sorry, I should have clarified. I'm saying, if we were to reallocate anything tonight, how much is, like, is available potentially for reallocation? I mean, I know we took a lot of things, but, you know, practically speaking, are there, is there a little hanging fruit?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would look at this and say, the only items that are, I would, I would say can be reallocated is the 54,600 left in the FIT Court account, because that's done, right? That's done. And possibly money at the EDC that hasn't been, you know, designated within their area yet. Those would be the only two that I would see. Everything else is either under contract or ready to roll.
I do think the EDC, because, again, I don't want to speak for that council, but there was a one allocation for 100,000 relative to, they called it arts and events or something along those lines.
Creative arts and events.
Yeah, there was a bit of difference of opinion, I'd say, relative to some of the ideas that were put out relative to those funds, so I just want to, for transparency, if people are aware of that, I think that. I think that that is, that's a little bit of a squishier category, if you will. It's not as clear. I see that Chairman McLean has his hand up.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to make entirely clear, Steve, a couple of matters. I think it's pretty clear to me and I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any, you know, misunderstanding about it. Relative to the Affordable Housing Trust, I think we both agree that from our meetings, the 185,000 that is left is really earmarked for that renters assistance program, not necessarily a dual rental assistance program slash first-time home buyers or first timers. Really focusing on renters assistance with that money. Would you agree?
I would say, yeah, that was our first priority, absolutely.
Right. And I think that program is already being implemented and hopefully we'll have some results to report. But like you say, there was, there have been a couple of inquiries and one person was just flabbergasted that we had the possibility of a $5,000 grant to cover, you know, her needs. I was thrilled to hear that. The other thing is I just wanted to mention, Steve, I wanted to ask, you say that we're doing a lot of tree work. I did look at the tree documentation and I was a little bit surprised. I thought our folks would be doing much of the work, but it looks like there's a lot of contract work there. Could perhaps Joe explain, you know, how often our people are doing the work and how often we're contracting it out? Specifically, I'll be entirely honest, I saw a pretty high labor rate, you know, for private, you know, labor that, you know, is using our ARPA funds. So I want to, I want to be transparent and say, well, I'm wondering about that.
Sure. So typically, the heavy plantings that we do in the fall and then in the springtime, we do end up resourcing a lot of help for that. Some of which you saw was the price of the trees and then some labor. Our forestry division is a group of three, one of which who is going to be retiring and leaving at the end of the week. With that limitation, to be able to go out and plant 60, 70 trees a season is just something that isn't completely feasible for us. You know, there are other plantings that go on during the year that they handle, you know, a various host of other different requests. But given the scale and the size of these type of plantings, especially, we've teamed up, we try to follow with the municipal gas and light department. So they're doing some things on the wire side of the street, we're doing some things on the opposite side of the street so that it becomes more of a holistic type project. To be able to achieve that, especially at the pace, you know, that we're trying to keep up with the funding, we have to bring in some help to do so. So that's reflected in some of those contracts, bills and different things that you saw in the packet.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And just to follow up on what Steve said relative to Article III, I'd certainly be supportive of any amounts, you know. Seems to me the 54,600 could be reallocated if a majority of the council agrees to the solar project and any other unallocated amounts, you know, to the extent that the council agrees. Thank you. That's all I have right now, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments? If not, oh, go ahead, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nebraska. Chairman McLean, I know you did most of the work on this and you consulted with Mr. Mullen. Can you, Mr. Mullen and Chairman McLean, expand a little bit about the necessity to go into the Massachusetts Historical Society before doing, commencing any work on the windows at the Warren School, the senior center?
Well, I can, I can start addressing that if the town council is amenable. You know, we have a lot of involved concerned citizens and we've heard from a couple of them tonight. And it wasn't really 100% on my radar screen, but when I was informed that the Warren School was on the National Historic Register, and I don't think all of us necessarily knew that, I certainly didn't. But once I was apprised of that, I did look at the, you know, it's not real legal research, folks, it's just going to the internet. I looked at the Mass Historical Commission website, noticed that if there, you know, because what does everybody ask, historical commissioner in mass? What can I do with my building? Can I renovate my building? So I went to the FAQs and I went to the website and simply looked up, you know, can you, can you renovate your building? And the answer, when federal funds are used, and obviously, you know, in the tax business, I consider ARPA funds to be federal funds, I think there's no doubt about that, that those were being used, that we would have to run the windows not only by the local historical commission, but also the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And I immediately reported back to Town Administrator and Town Council for their opinion on that.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. Counselor Butt, I believe your hand is up as well?
Yeah, Steve, can I just ask you a couple of questions? Thank you for that presentation on the ARPA funds. One, haven't we dedicated funds to convert like a room at the civic center and a room at the library to be Zoom capable? You didn't mention those. Are those live? Can people reserve those?
The library, I believe, I don't think they're in prime time yet. I would suggest that people use the public safety building and the two rooms at town hall first. But the other ones are in, are, were in the mix as well, but I just don't think they're, sometimes the configurations of the room doesn't work as well. So I would suggest we use those first.
We could get, yeah, I totally understand. I just, I just, I'm hearing from groups that it's hard, you know, there's, there's so many boards and committees in town. So if we could kind of from like Todd and, you know, the Catherine and whoever runs those rooms, I know people are running out of rooms. And, you know, I thought that they'd kind of be up to par by now, so if we could figure out what the holdup is, that would be great. And then also, I loved something I was just thinking about. You gave the update about the trust, the housing trust. And one thing that we were going to try to do on an annual basis is the Wakefield Emergency Fund. Every kind of December, get an update about how that's doing? I don't know. Haven't heard anything. So if we could for a future meeting, just get an update on that, again, ARPA adjacent, but I'd love to hear how that fund is doing and who we've helped with it.
I can tell you right now that if anybody's out there and looking for someplace to donate money at the end of the year, the emergency fund is a good spot because it's, it isn't as robust as we'd like.
Okay, so it sounds like we, there's at least 54,600, approximately $600 that would be subject to reallocation. We know that that's freed up.
Yeah.
So, and it sounds like from what I understand of Counselor McLean, specifically, the solar project is one area in which he would be interested in trying to redirect some funds if possible. Have I had that correctly, you know, stated Chairman McLean?
You do.
So with that said, is there, is it the will of this body to want to allocate the now freed up funds potentially for the solar project?
I would be happy to make a motion to reallocate the freed up 54,600 from the fit court to the Galvin Solar Project.
Do we have a second?
Subject to town meeting, subject to town meeting approval.
Of course.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vincent. Any discussion on that? Counselor Chines?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm not unsupportive of it. I, you know, my concern though, and, you know, in general, as we think about this, is we have a project that already has a really strong ROI, that already is projected to pay for itself in four years. To me, the question is, is there something that doesn't have an ROI that would create value in the community that is in line with the original intention of the fit court funds that are worth doing? And so my preference, and, you know, I may be the only one on this, but my preference would be, I'd actually love to kind of bring this back to the next meeting, you know, maybe with some, you know, estimates as to, you know, what we could do in terms of improvements around the fit court at Molton Park so that, you know, we don't have this one gem of a facility, you know, surrounded by recreational resources there that are subpar. So that would be my preference. I think, you know, if, you know, the dollars aren't worth spending there, I'm supportive of kind of putting it towards the Galvin roof. I'm supportive of the Galvin roof in general. I think that that's something that I would have been happy to go forward with even if we didn't have the ARPA funds, because again, it does have an ROI for it. But, you know, this is one where, at least for me, I would love to get a little bit more information before we reallocate those particular funds.
Steve, is that something we could get a sense from you?
We definitely can get a sense. So we, we did more of a master plan for Molton Park at the time. So Steve and I were out there, met with, had a couple of public meetings, residential meetings with everybody, talking about what they wanted to see, came back with some, the kind of overall sketches. So the plan was actually relocate the basketball court into the tennis court area and to also create a hockey rink as well. So that's what the neighbors had all asked for us to do. So the plan initially was that the, where the existing basketball court is now, that would turn into bocce courts.
Yep.
That we were asked for. So I evaluated the bocce court costs and I couldn't do it within the existing budget because I essentially would have to take down the basketball court in the meantime. So I didn't think that that made a ton of sense. I think we really, if we're going to do this, my recommendation would be to look at it holistically and not try to force that 50,000. I tried to already and it just didn't make sense to do it when we, when we ran the numbers on the bocce court.
But we, you know, I guess, just to push back on that, so it sounds like we were looking at sort of a re-imagination though of some of the space. And I mean, I'm just looking at it from the perspective of, you know, you have a tennis court and a basketball court that have, you know, broken pavement and, you know, are just really not up to, to kind of snuff in terms of, you know, being usable from a recreational standpoint. So I, I guess the question is not necessarily, you know, what would it take to do that larger project? I mean, I think the, the street hockey rink itself would have been pretty, pretty expensive, well beyond the 54,000.
I think we found some better ways to knock that number down significantly instead of, well, I don't have to get into the details, but we've looked at dropping that, that cost down significantly.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I guess my question though is, you know, what do we get for 54,000 just in terms of like resurfacing and making what's already there usable, you know, for the purposes that they are, you know, kind of set aside for? I guess that's where, I would just love some more information to think about, you know, is there, you know, maybe not kind of the end state vision of what we'd like to do, but, you know, something that at least can kind of activate the space that's already there that I think is underused because of the conditions it's in.
I see Chairman McLean has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I would like to respond to Counselor Chines' idea here. As we all know, I did try to put a half of, half a roof on the solar in our last ARPA funding, I call it the ARPA II meeting, where, you know, a couple of my most progressive council members voted against me and had the solar rated 13 or 14th out of 13 or 14 projects. And, you know, I, I wasn't obviously happy with that result, but the ultimate result here could be that we get a full roof. Now, the difference between our doing half a roof where we could have had it up there already and all those hot days we had in summer, we could have been collecting kilowatt-hours and reducing our electrical bill at the middle school. The difference between that and a full roof is we have to go to town meeting. And that town meeting, and by the way, that was Counselor Chines' motion, very exuberant, that this was a great project and, believe me, I know the ROI because I'm the person that helped set it up. But when we go, that's return on investment, for those of you who don't speak in acronyms. You know, when we go to town meeting, we have to ask for money. And, you know, this is a great project. We have 150 in ARPA right now. Now naturally, you may recall, I had to do a little bit of fighting to get that. We have, Steve will update it, we have a $200,000 contribution from gas and light because we do have a cooperative relationship because we will own the solar racks and they would like to procure them from us. So that's wonderful. And we will also hopefully, and there's a timing difference on this, for those of you who are doing blasts to the communities out there, you know, on, on social media, I hope you're also mentioning that we should get 30% or so, which on a million dollars is a few hundred grand, back from the treasury, although there's a timing difference on that because we're going to have to put in for it and wait to get it. But yes, this is, this project is set up wonderfully. But, you know, having, most of us have town and meeting experience and you, you never do know what's going to happen. So I'm more interested, instead of trying to figure out how to spend 52,4 or 54,6 somewhere else, you know, prospectively, without a real idea or a real plan, because this is the one project that has a real idea and a real plan, you know, that we put the money towards this. It won't fall on my sword if we don't get it, but I really think that that's the best place to put it. Maybe EDC can give 50,000 to a playground instead. I don't know. I'm not taking sides here. I'm just saying, I think that this makes a lot of sense to do whatever we can to get that solar passed because that's the one project that's going to make this town money. That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions? I would just remind everyone from a timing perspective, this, this solar project would need to be decided at this meeting because our next meeting would fall after town meeting. And so if this is, it's the will of this body to pursue that, this would be the meeting to do that. If it's not the will of this body, then obviously the 54,600 is available for the remainder of this year.
Just a point of information on that. I mean, we could certainly allocate more, I mean, you know, effectively, we would be then using less of the funds that town meeting allocates if we chose to allocate our additional ARPA funds to it after town meeting.
Correct. I think my understanding from Chairman McLean is that he's trying to present that town meeting as having been better, better funded.
I understand that. I, no, I understand that and I can understand the reason for that. I just, you know, I don't think that it's accurate to say that we couldn't allocate the funds afterwards. We obviously can't represent a town meeting that we've allocated them if we haven't. But I mean, we certainly could add additional funds if we wanted to kind of take down the, you know, the tax levy burden of the project, you know, after that.
No, I agree with that, Counselor Chines. I think, for example, if another source of funds, and I'm not picking on the EDC, marrying and ed, I'm not, but I mean, if for some reason you had some money left over by 1231, even if this had passed town meeting, it's not to say we couldn't real, we couldn't allocate further funds. I'm simply saying that the presentation at town meeting, I want to be as positive as possible so that it passes. And every dollar that we put in from ARPA is a dollar we don't take out of free cash.
If people are looking, obviously we have a motion that's been seconded. If people are looking for other alternatives, the EDC, if they did continue with the facade and sign program, I do think there's interest there. So there is, the money would not be wasted, you know, certainly, no matter what we do. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If we don't have any further discussion on that, then why don't we do a roll call vote? Chairman McLean?
Sorry, the length of that discussion.
I'm sorry, yes.
What is the motion again? And what are we voting on?
The motion before would be to allocate 54, approximately 54,600, the remainder from the fit court and apply that towards the solar project, ARPA funds that have already been so designated to be presented at town meeting as such. So Chairman McLean?
Obviously, it would be a yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yeah.
Counselor Butler?
No.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
No.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. So that would be five to two. The motion, the motion carries. Item 6G is town meeting updates. I'll turn that over to Town Administrator Mayo for just quick updates on Articles 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6.
Okay, thank you very much. We did some quick math there too. So as I had in my lengthy memo, and I'm sorry to the council for reading that, but we had a very good meeting with the forecasting subcommittee of the Finance Committee. And we really have a great rapport and for those of you that maybe... And we really have a great rapport and for those of you that maybe enjoyed those meetings in the past, they really are pretty interesting. The Excel spreadsheet is on the screen and we move stuff around, or Chairman moves stuff around and we talk about it. So, you know, we kind of go back, that we finished fiscal year '24 in excellent shape with about $15 million in total reserves. And that's in my budget, my application to you. So, at town meeting, we will have a couple of articles that I do want to talk about. And the first one is balancing the budget. And for those of you, and that's Article 2. Article 1 is my very pithy town report, which I believe you also all have a copy of and I'll be happy to talk to you later about that. So, Article 2 is our use of free cash to balance the budget. And those of you know that Kevin and I use a very conservative metrics, particularly in local receipts. And I know that Councilman Butler and I might go back and forth on this, but we're using $8 million worth of local receipts to balance the budget, which the Department of Revenue really likes our conservatism. And the Finance Committee is using $10,500,000. So, because of that, we'll be looking for $3,850,000 to balance the fiscal year '25 budget. But I think at the end of the year, everything's going to fall back to free cash because, you know, the receipts will come in more for that. So, that is Article 2. Do you want me to keep going? And do you want to all the?
Yes, please. Do the model.
Article 3, which is the Galvin Solar. And in your packet is the Galvin Solar. And that, the cost of that is $976,412. We did go out to put out an RFP for this. I had, I believe, eight or 10 people that actually wanted the package, two that presented bids. We went through a review of those bids with a matrix. Counselor Mullin was there as well. And we did land on a company that, the amount was $976,412. Of that, so that's the total cost. 150,000 of ARPA funds that was already approved. The Municipal Light Department had agreed $186,000 to pay for the wrecks because they were doing a lot of infrastructure work out there. We asked them to increase that a little bit, which they did, to $200,000. So, that brought us down to needing $626,412 free cash. Based on the information tonight, or the movement tonight, we'll be looking for free cash of $571,812 will be the motion at town meeting. But that's not the full story. There are tax credits involved in this under the Inflation Reduction Act. And this is really what makes these projects so exciting. So, anywhere between 30% to 40%, and 40% would be if we can convince the federal government that these components were manufactured locally and there are, not locally, but in the U.S., there are factories and I think in, I want to think Georgia and the Midwest, but they're in the country, no matter what. So, we would get anywhere between 292 and 390,000 in tax credits, which means that the total cost of this project would be between 100, excuse me, would be between, you know, $300,000 to $200,000 after all the tax credits come in. That makes that return on investment that you talked about almost less than four years. So, it's a great deal for the town, and I think. And so, we'll be looking for 571,812 on that. Article 4 is the MBTA. We've talked about that a lot over the last few weeks. No money component. Article 5 is the clerical contract, which the Town Council approved at the last meeting. The cost of that is $53,941 from free cash and other money from water and sewer because we charge those back to those accounts. Article 6 is a water and sewer supplement. And again, when we do our tax recap to set our tax rate with the Department of Revenue, one thing they look at is our last year's water and sewer receipts. And they particularly look at the first quarter. Well, for some reason, our first quarter of this year, water consumption was way down. I don't really understand why. I don't remember it being overly wet the first quarter of this fiscal year, but be that as it may, our consumption was way down. So, we were very concerned about, you know, because water rates and the selling of water is how we run the department. Second quarter has really bounced back, but to be on the safe side, we'd like to use the sewer reserves and water reserves to balance the budget. It will make the Department of Revenue very happy, will allow us to set our tax rate, which they may not be too keen about doing if we don't do it this way. And they do hold up communities, as Ed Bean pointed out to us at the forecast meeting. We talked about it. And so, we'd use 160,975 of sewer and 501,119 of water. And that would allow us to balance the budget. So, those are the, you know, the number articles. At the end of town meeting, we will still have reserves of right about 10%, you know, just in line with our policy. And I think that at the end of the year, we'll bounce back up to be very healthy again, which will be very important when we go out to bond council for surveillance call in the fall. And I think our, I'm projecting that our year end balances will be right around 13% of our budget at year's end, which is kind of in that ballpark that they gave me, you know, weren't so thrilled about 10, but 13 was pretty good. So, I feel confident going forward with this budget and these articles at town meeting. Ready for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mayo?
Just on?
Counselor Butler?
Article 3, in terms of, I mean, what's the 200, so we're getting 200,000 from?
MLD.
For?
These are for the reusable energy credits or whatever it is called. There is some sort of a market for this.
So, he, oh, so then he's able to?
He's able to use them.
He's able to sell those credits. I just think, like, before we all get all happy about a three-year payback period, let's remember, we're putting in $200,000 of ARPA money that you're not counting towards that reinvestment. You're saying 150, but we just gave them another 56, is that what we just gave?
Yep.
So, yeah, I?
It'll be four and a half.
I'm, I am, I am always highly skeptical of the, especially like these payback periods that are super short and that we're, let's talk in three years whether or not we've realized $90,000 a year of electrical savings here. But before everybody starts jumping up and down over, and again, it's undoubtedly my naysayerism, but like, the notion that everybody thinks we're getting a great deal on the solar panels on the roof has me a little concerned.
I see Chairman McLean with his head up.
Sure, I certainly don't want to argue with the contrarian, but I would like to say that one of the, you know, it's rare that a non-taxpaying entity like the municipality can get this 30%. But once that kicked into existence, it really did change the numbers. I'm sure you're in business and you may have noticed, or maybe not, because I'm more in the tax line of things, there are projects going out throughout this country because of this. I did want to clarify that I don't think we're going to see U.S. content-based inverters and modules created on time for us to go to 40%, but I think it's fair to say that the 30% is in play. And, you know, when you do any kind of analysis on return on investment, and all these spreadsheets, by the way, Doug, are in everybody's packages.
No, I know.
You know, going back, you know, so.
I'm not doubting you here.
Solar is not brand new. This has been done for a long time. And those electric bills at the Galvin are really high. And, you know, we will get the credits from Gas and Light for months, you know, summer months, for example, where we may overproduce. And that's what the return on investment is all about. Doug, I would do this project if we had no 30% credit. If we had no ARPA money, I would be pushing it.
Oh, yeah. And by the way, I don't think we want the 40% credit. I don't think, like, I think probably the solar technology, like, I'm not sure we would want, you know, the?
Well, I think, I think that's just based on where they make it. And I will tell you that two of the, in the bid, so both Solar Edge and Q cells, Solar Edge for inverters and Q cells for modules, and the modules are the bigger part of it, but the inverters are the brains, both of those companies have begun U.S. manufacturing to try to get to that 40%, not because Wakefield is pushing them to do it, but because huge companies like, you know, yeah, throughout the country, I mean, the biggest, I believe first solar has manufacturing in Ohio. And there's a lot of this going on in Texas, you know. It's not, Massachusetts is probably a small player per se, but both of these companies have, you know, have moved. Q cells has actually got two manufacturing places in Georgia. So, I don't think, I just don't think the timing of it will work for us for the 40% of the content base. I think we take what they've got right now, we take our 30% because we want to get the project down the roof and we want to get it on the roof, you know, before the sun starts shining next spring or next summer. But, you know, these are not wacky predictions. I mean, I hope we can come back in three or four years and say, how did it work out? Look at those electrical bills together.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Any other comments? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion as based upon what Mr. Mayo just presented to us, those are the articles.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move for the Town Council to approve Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 for presentation at town meeting on the 16th.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vincent. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yep.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
I'll turn my sign this way.
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, seven, zero. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, a quick update on warrants.
You're not sticking around for warrants at 10:45 either, okay? Warrant 12.
Actually, while we have you both, if I could just mention, it's going to be in my announcements, but since we have you here, thank God that you guys, that water and sewer can now be paid online with using credit cards. That is a huge improvement. Talk about a quality of life improvement. So, thank you to everyone involved with making that happen.
Can't wait because of all the credit.
It's incredible. So, thank you, yes.
Warrant number 12, 5.447 million and change. Most of that is, or the two significant parts there are Public Works is 1.5 million and group insurance adjustments is another almost 1.5 million. Warrant 14, 41,333,248,87 cents. 3 million of that is under the Town Council for Wakeville Memorial High School. 35,960,000 is under the treasurer. 31,396 of that is for the bond for Wakeville Memorial High School and for roads. Warrant 16, 8.659 million. Group insurance is one, almost 1.7 million of that. The light department is 3.287 million. And most of that is for the gas and light, natural gas, hydrogen blend-fueled reciprocating combustion engine generator installation. Please do not ask me what that means. I just know that's what the money is allocated for. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Vincent. Item 8 is approval of minutes. We'll begin with the October 21st, 2024 Town Council meeting minutes.
Actually, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to approve the October 21st, 2024 Town Council meeting minutes, the October 21st, 2024 Town Council executive minutes, and the October 28th, 2024 tri board meeting minutes?
I believe we had everyone at tri board, correct?
Yes.
I was, I was at the executive session meeting.
Okay. So, why don't we take, we could, we could take the Town Council meeting minutes from the 21st and the 20th tri board as one?
Fair enough.
Okay. Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Second, okay. Assuming no discussion. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
And myself, yes, seven, zero.
Mr. Vice Chair, move to approve the October 21st, 2024 Town Council executive meeting, executive committee meeting minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. With that, any discussion? Hearing done. Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Butler?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Great.
And Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And myself, yes, six, zero, one abstention. Madam Clerk. Item 9 is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements this evening? Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Just a quick announcement, you know, I, along with the rest of the Galvin Middle School parents today, got a message from Superintendent Lyons about some racial graffiti that was painted on one of the signs near one of the soccer fields. And, you know, as kind of disturbing as that was, what was also disturbing is that this is the second time in two weeks that we've gotten a similar message. And so, I wanted to call attention to it because, you know, it's something that I hope, you know, all of us in the community, you know, as parents, as grandparents, as tested adults, you know, take the time to talk to our kids and talk to the young people in our lives about this, not only about how doing this is wrong, but I think also sort of encouraging kids to say something and to stand up when they see something that they know is wrong. You know, I hope that, you know, this represents, you know, something that is more misguided than anything else and that it's a teaching moment for anyone who's involved. But, again, it, you know, the frequency that I've gotten these messages over the last two weeks is something that's really stuck with me and, you know, hope that, you know, we as a community can do better and see that these things don't happen as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chines. Anyone else? Counselor Butler?
Sure. And a rare announcement from me, I actually just want to congratulate the Wakefield High School, the Warrior Marching Band that won their second consecutive Division V championship and, in fact, swept the awards for best music, best visual, best effect, best percussion and best color guard and received a platinum medal. This ended their season undefeated in all of their competitions and, you know, a hearty shout out. And it really is, you know, my son is on it, but it really is a wonderful, like, group of kids who are like enormously talented and they're led by Thomas Bankert, who does a fantastic job. And my goodness, I thought hockey was an intense season, but like, marching band, my goodness, the amount of practice they do.
Thank you for that, yes, congratulations. That was a great, well-earned victory, for sure. Chairman McLean?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm sure that this will come as a surprise, but we have an election tomorrow, so if you haven't voted, please vote.
A reminder to everyone, we have central voting at Galvin Middle School, 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. School is not in session, so there should be ample parking and plenty of opportunity in that 13 hours to be able to make it there. Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Vice Chair Nebraska. I was going to defer to you as the liaison to mention Veterans Day, if you had that.
Go ahead.
So, Veterans Day is Monday, the 11th of November at the Galvin Middle School. Commander Nickeden, U.S. Navy, is a Wakeville native and the former commanding officer of the U.S., Thomas Hudner, is the guest speaker. I also want to note that there's going to be an unveiling of the indoor Amerigo Division flag on December 6th. December 7th is a Saturday and it was too congested to do it that day. I remind everyone that the Amerigo Division was established by the U.S. Army in 1942 in response to the attack on Pearl Harbor. And that's why we decided to have a small ceremony to unveil the indoor flag on December 6th to be as close to December 7th as we could. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just said one thing. Wanted to congratulate the town clerk and her office staff and the poll workers who registrars who come in and work with her. Around 8,500 people have early voted in Wakefield, which is a good amount. Around eighty-five hundred people have early voted in Wakefield, which is a good amount. And I, I think that they're all very happy that early voting was, was over on Friday because it was a constant stream at the counter and, you know, tomorrow is, is Election Day and I would just hope that everyone goes there. It's wonderful that we all have the, we have the right to vote. I hope everybody goes there in that spirit and, and good humor, which is mostly what we saw with the early voters. So I just hope that that continues. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to briefly congratulate the Wakefield Firefighters Relief Fund on their first annual five K run. I was there with Counselor Carney. It was a great turnout, great weather, and it was just a great group of folks. So congratulations and hoping for many, many years to come for a really important cause. Also, congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club on their recent gala that was held about a week or week and a half ago. Tremendous turnout, I think about five hundred people actually. They raised a lot of money. They've really expanded. Now they're in Saugus as well, and they're just doing some really phenomenal work. It was great to see all my friends from Biddy and Bo's who are going to be at Inspire Cafe, and they announced that they expect to be opening up the early part of, of December, if all goes as planned. So that's, that's really exciting stuff as well. And so with that, if there are no further announcements, we'll move on to item ten, any matters not anticipated? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to reconvene on November eighteenth at seven p.m. with sincere thanks to WCAT for hosting us as always.
So moved.
And do we have any objection? If I gavel this, meeting adjourned at ten fifty-one. Thank you, Wakefield. Please don't forget to vote tomorrow and have a good night.